Good evening, I would like to provide a brief overview of tonight's meeting. After a few procedural items, the board will hear thirty minutes of public comment. At the end of the meeting, there will be a second and final opportunity for additional public comments. So if you do not get to speak during the first call, we encourage you to stay till the end. To request to participate in public comment, click on the participants button at the bottom of your screen, and select the raise your hand button. To comment by phone, you will be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine. When called upon, you will be upgraded to a panelist, which means that you will appear on screen. If you do not wish to appear on camera, please be sure to turn to disable your camera on your end. The board president will usually call on our students first. So if you are a student who wishes to speak, please write "student" at the end of your name. The board president will determine to set tonight's speaking time at one, two, or three minutes per speaker, and on an individual basis also has the discretion to allow for extra time for those who need translation or have other speeches. When your time has elapsed, you will see Vice President Brown holding up a sign letting you know you have fifteen seconds left. If you are still speaking, please finish your sentence but try not to speak beyond your time. Thank you.
Buenas noches y bienvenidos. We have proposed an honorable resume detailing the order of this reunion. There's supposed to be some preliminary, so a period of thirty minutes is dedicated to commentary. At the end of the call, there will be a second and last opportunity for commentary. And those who could have participated during the first call can do it in that time. To comment via video conference, click on the button at the bottom of your screen and select the event to raise your hand. To participate via telephone, press star nine. When called, you will be promoted to a panelist, which means that you will appear on screen. Students who want to speak, please indicate that they are students by writing "student" after their name. The president also has the discretion to give additional time to those who require translation or who need another class of adaptation. When called, you will be promoted to a panelist, and you will appear on the screen. If you do not want to appear on the screen, please turn off your camera. When it has passed, Vice President Brown will raise his hand to indicate that he has fifteen minutes, fifteen seconds, fifteen seconds, to conclude his commentary. Please turn off the recording, because you will be wasting your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Charis. Ms. Charis, Director Babbitt is having trouble logging in. Do you mind checking with her? Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the May 5th meeting of the Berkeley School Board. As Ms. Charis just mentioned, if you would like to give public comment, now is the time. Now is the time to raise your hand. Some people are having trouble getting on, but if you're here, you didn't have trouble getting on. So we're trying, well, we're going to try to figure out what's going on. In the meantime, Ms. Charis, are you there to call roll?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. Thanks.
Student Director Miles Miller.
Here.
Director Anna Vasudev.
Present.
Director Laura Babbitt will be with us momentarily. Director Julie Sine.
I'm here.
Vice President Kitty Giebrow.
Present.
President Ty Alper.
Present. I want to thank you. Director Babbitt is here now, thank you. And I wanted to let people know that we are experimenting with the live transcript of the meeting. So if you click on "live transcript" at the bottom of your screen, you should be able to see the transcript. It does not translate Spanish well, as we just realized when Ms. Charis was speaking in Spanish, but it does a pretty good job of English. So we're going to try that out tonight. And thank you to the public commenter who made the suggestion a few weeks ago. Again, this is the time to raise your hand if you would like to give public comment. Associate Superintendent Jai, do you know if the people who are having trouble getting in are now able to, or is it still a problem?
They're still trying.
Okay.
Assistant Superintendent, is this attendees or panelists?
Attendees.
Attendees, okay. Thank you.
Attend, you mean, but staff?
Staff, yeah. They're not part of any presentation, they're just...
They're doing the general thing, is that what they're attempting to do?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
No, moved.
Motion by Director Sine. Second.
Second.
Second by Director Vasudev. Ms. Charis, can you call the roll?
Student Director Miller.
Yes.
Director Vasudev.
Yes.
Director Babbitt.
Yes.
Director Sine.
Yes.
Vice President Brown.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes. Okay, I'm just stalling a little bit because we know some people are having trouble getting in. Okay, now we have the report from closed session, so I'll turn it over to Vice President Brown.
Thank you, President Alper. For closed session, all board directors were present. For 3.1.1, the board heard an update and gave direction. For 3.1.2, there was no update shared. 3.1.3, no updates, and 3.1.4, no updates shared either. For item 3.2, the board heard an update and gave direction. And this is the reading of the closed session notes.
You did that so fast, I was trying to stall.
Sorry, I can read them again if you want me to.
No, that's okay. All right. Now is the opportunity for public comment. Some people are still having trouble getting in. Ms. Charis, do you know why they're having trouble getting in?
I'm trying to figure it out. It looks like the link on the website is correct. That's the one that everyone that has been able to log in has been using, so...
Okay. It's on the website?
On the website.
Okay. Director Vasudev, if there's someone who can't get in, can you ask them to just try the one on the website?
I think she did, I see her, she hasn't raised her hand to give...
Oh, great, okay, okay, I'm going to stop stalling. All right, we'll move to public comment now. Sorry, I'm a little scattered. Let's see, all right. This is your chance to raise your hand if you'd like to give public comment. There's pause. And if you raise your hand after we start the public comment period, you'll be able to speak, but not until the end of the meeting. So once we start doing public comment, that will be the list of people who are speaking. So I'm going to cap it right now at the people who are currently raising their hands. And that means that the last public speaker will be Deborah Nelson. Each, let me just see for a second, each public speaker will get two minutes. We do have two students who I'm going to call first. And in appreciation for their time joining us here, I'm going to give them an extra minute each. The first one, although I don't see her, Samya Valer. Is she, or Violet Kessler? Violet, I don't see Violet Kessler either. Okay. Okay, then I'm going to call on, Ms. Charis, this is a little bit out of order, but another student we have here is Shayla Avery. We have a couple of students. Ms. Avery, are you with us?
Hello?
Hi. Go ahead, thanks for being here.
Hi, I'm Shay.
You muted yourself, Shayla.
Oh, I got moved as a panelist. Okay, cool. Hello.
Hi.
I'm Shayla Avery, I'm a senior at Berkeley High, and I will be continuing my studies at UCLA next year. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the BRIDGE program. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about how important that program is to me and how it benefited me so much throughout my high school experience, and how my British teacher Spencer Precher has literally been my rock throughout the roller coaster of high school for me and has helped me so much throughout the college application process and getting me into college. And I just wanted to say that I really do hope that the BRIDGE program expands and continues to be this amazing program for students coming into high school and bridging that gap for Black and Brown students to get to the top college like I did. And I hope that my brother has the same experience that I do. And I'm really grateful for everything the program has offered to me.
Thank you so much, Shayla, for being here. Okay, next is going to be, her name, Ms. Charis, is speaker number one, Samya Van Valer. Hi. I think you're muted. There you go. There you are.
Hello, my name is Samya. I'm a fifth grader at Oxford Elementary. I would like to start off by saying thank you to you all for supporting the Sustainability Plan and moving away from plastic and towards more climate-friendly solutions. I speak to you today not only on behalf of myself, but also on behalf of my two younger siblings, Kaya and Leah, as well as all the other children in my class and my school. The marine life in our waters are fading out of existence. And one of the main causes to this problem is plastic pollution, including the single-use plastic from our school grounds. This pollution goes into the ocean, trapping and sickening marine life. Even with all of the commitments to our schools, the problems are getting worse, and we are back to square one. Every year, more than 380 million pounds of plastic is made and used in our lives. Most plastic is not recycled. Actually, only 8.7% is. The next step for a lot of discarded, single-use plastic is the worst. It goes in the ocean by way of wind and storm drains. In the future, I would like to become a marine biologist, and I dream of an ocean with marine life I can study. If you think the impact on our oceans is bad, listen to this. All of this plastic can and does end up in your children's meal. In fact, an average person eats an entire credit card's worth of plastic each week. That means they're actually eating plastic in school meals. But it's not just the plastic, it's all single-use. Even compostable foodware is detrimental to the planet because of all the fossil fuels it takes to make it. The compostable items used in our schools' meals contain PFAs, chemicals that harm the development of my body and all the children in our schools. Some of the ideas I've had to stop packaging pollution on school grounds is using reusable cutlery, not serving food in one-time-use containers, and parents could stop buying plastic at stores for their children. Another idea of how we can stop harmful waste on school grounds is by going completely zero waste, which my teacher, Jacqueline Amania, has encouraged many students at Oxford Elementary to do. Learning and actually being single-use and plastic-free at school has a big impact because students can share the information and change their family. I hope that we can see some real changes in these commitments in the near future. With dishwashers at schools, especially Oxford Elementary where everything is new, and hiring of someone to do the dishes, let's replace paper boats, fiber plates, and bowls that have PFAS and plastic cups and utensils with reusable trays, cups, cutlery, and bowls. Our health, our future, and our planet is at stake. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Samya. I'm sorry for mispronouncing your name earlier. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And we have another student, I believe, Solidad de Mucha Flores. Ms. Charis, sorry I'm making you go out of order.
Don't worry, I'm keeping up.
Hello. Hi, my name is Solidad de Mucha Flores. I am a student at Berkeley Independent Study, which is a program a part of Berkeley High School. And I just want to say, I do not think that is, is not equitable that BIS and BTA students are last priority for elective courses at Berkeley High School. My recommendation is that students of Berkeley Independent Study and BTA be given the same priority as BHS students. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks for being here. Okay. I believe that's all the students that I see. So just a reminder that everyone has two minutes, and Vice President Brown is going to hold up a sign when you've got fifteen seconds left. We've got a number of speakers, so if you can keep it to two minutes and finish your sentence when you see the sign, that would be great. The first speaker is, the next speaker is Jason Jason Vilches. And then John Becker.
Hello.
Hello, we can hear you.
Hi. My name is Jason Vilches, and I'm a third year. I'm currently attending UC Riverside. And I got a message from Ms. Luxford, told me to help and talk. Just, you know, I just want to talk to you guys about my experiences with the BRIDGE program. And I fell in love with the BRIDGE program. I was a freshman, and I didn't know what to do, and high school was really hard. And I joined the BRIDGE program, and it helped me progress and become the student I am now. Fully motivated and just ready to move on and find a career myself. And I just wanted to say that the experience I had with BRIDGE, really, they helped me with my homework, essays, anything you name it. And they helped me get into college. And all their help would have not been possible without, you know, all that their help would have not been possible without for me to get into college. So I think that this program is very important to keep, to stay at this school. It's been around for eleven years. And I think it's very important for you guys to fund this program. And not only just fund this program, but expand it so that more students have the opportunity that I had, and so they can also have the opportunity to go to college. It's very important for students of color and minorities like me to get extra help. It's hard, it's hard for us. It takes more time for us to learn these things and to get more help. We don't have the same resources and opportunities that other people have. So I think that it's really important to expand this program, add at least two cohorts per grade, and pay the teachers because the teachers are very helpful. And my teacher, Erica Ms. Luxford, I believe, were volunteering the whole time, have been volunteering all their time after school, and just putting in all their time and effort to make sure that we get into college and that we get to where we are. And it's been really successful. Pretty much all of my classmates got into college. So for that, I think that you guys should keep with this program. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vilches, and thank you for coming back. It's great to see alums of Berkeley High and alums of the BRIDGE program. So thanks for being here. And it's a huge advantage of Zoom, that someone can zoom in from college. All right, Mr. Becker, followed by Amanda Marini.
All right, good evening, School Board Directors, Superintendent Stevens, Superintendent Stevens, BUSD staff. It's been a while since I've been up here talking to you. My name is John Becker. For those of you who I don't know, I've taught at Berkeley High School in the Arts and Humanities Academy for fourteen years. And I'd like to talk to you tonight about the cost of healthcare benefits, specifically about the negotiated agreement between BFT and the district to share cost increases. My wife and I are both BUSD teachers, and I cover us and our two young children through BUSD's Kaiser Family Plan. Health benefits are a major expense for us. It is our third-largest item in our budget after housing and preschool, which in the Bay Area, if you know, you know, they are no joke. While there is little we as a district and as a union can do to control the overall cost of healthcare, before 2020, it was also critically an unpredictable cost. I distinctly remember one of the worst parts of my tenure as BFT Vice President was when I had to share the year's benefits cost increases with our members at Berkeley High. Every single year, teachers' anxiety would spike. Every single year, teachers would come to me in tears, truly unsure of their ability to make ends meet mid-year. It wasn't just that costs would go up, it was that it was impossible for us to plan because we couldn't know what the increases would be. And beyond that, it just felt really unfair because the increased costs were calculated on the total cost of the benefits, but not just on our portion of them. And so why were we on the hook for the entire increase? Weren't we supposed to be sharing the cost of healthcare? I know from personal experience that the unpredictability and inequity of healthcare has forced teachers to leave our district and to leave the profession altogether. And the 50-50 cost-sharing agreement has reduced teacher anxiety and freed up energy to focus on teaching, which is energy that we need more than ever in these unprecedented times. I urge the district to continue this agreement going forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Good to see you. And next, we have Amanda Marini. Ms. Marini.
Hello?
There you are.
All right. Let me start my video. Good evening, I'm Amanda Marini. I've been at Berkeley High for over seventeen years, and I'm going to echo a lot of what John said. I'm here to urge the board to continue to support teachers and families by continuing to cover 50% of health insurance increases in our new contract. Health insurance has been a roller coaster for teachers. When I started teaching, I was single. The district paid 100% of our insurance, but in my first year, the district capped their contributions, so all new increases would be covered by teachers. So at the time, I was on Health Net, and my insurance cost jumped from zero to about $100. It stung. But being single and childless, I didn't really realize how much it hurt colleagues with families. Every year following, if we received small raises, they were immediately eaten up by increases in insurance. And most of us had to switch to a less expensive plan. But the cheaper plan didn't stay cheap. And after I added my husband and then had children, I really felt it. The cost skyrocketed, and many times, I was one of those people questioning how long I'd be able to teach. Currently, I pay about $960 every month for insurance out of my income, and it's a lot. But the past few years, at least, it's been stable. And normally, I dread January because that's when the increase hits and our paycheck shrinks. It makes my blood run cold because there have been years where it jumped 30%. So the new stability is something I rely on in order to financially plan, take care of my family, keep us housed and fed. And with our current contract, when there's an increase, the split softens the blow. Last year, for the first time I can remember, my raise wasn't immediately consumed by health insurance increases. What would have been a $120 increase was only $60 because the district split it with us. So for teachers with families, this means a lot. It means I have more stable and predictable income. It means our last raise was real. It means I worry less and don't constantly ask how long I can afford to teach. And significantly to me, it meant the district had my back around this dicey issue of insurance. We're in this together, so splitting the insurance increases is fair. And it helps us, those of us with families who are on district insurance without other options, and enables us to plan for our future and stay in Berkeley Unified. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marini. Next, we have Liza Letzker, followed by Mark Joseph Ramia.
Hi there, Board and Superintendent. I hope you're doing well this evening. So I am calling about item 14.1, the Sustainability Plan update. I'm really glad to see that it's coming before you. I'm also really glad to see transportation is highlighted in the report. I'll just say, I'm calling as a coordinating committee member of Walk Bike Berkeley and also a parent Safe Routes to School champion at Sylvia Mendez for the last five years. So I have a lot of knowledge around the transportation issue in Berkeley schools. First of all, I will say I'm a little disappointed that despite the fact that transportation accounts for 60% of all greenhouse gases emitted in the city of Berkeley, that it's omitted from the vision statement of the Sustainability Plan. And then, second, my major comment really is that the goal, the primary goal outlined in the Transportation section, is that we would reduce the number of families using single cars to get to school and increase the amount of active transportation. Those are great goals. We literally have zero ways of tracking that right now. It is not tracked in our Berkeley schools at all. There is a Safe Routes to School program where if there's a Safe Routes to School parent champion at the school, if the Safe Routes to School parent champion is successful in convincing the principal to ask the teachers, if the principal asks the teachers, and if the individual teachers survey their students, we might get information about four or five classes at a school. We have no systematic way of tracking this in our schools, and this is really critical. We can't have a goal if we don't have a way of measuring it. And now that you have a new sustainability position posted, and Safe Routes to School is part of this, this is a really, really critical piece of whoever is taking that role is establishing a district-wide, every single child in every single class at all grade levels to figure out how to track how kids are getting to school so that we can actually measure whether we are meeting our goal on that Sustainability Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mark Joseph Ramia, followed by Grace Lee. Mark Joseph. You're muted.
Okay, thank you. Mark Ramia here. I'm a classified instructional assistant paraprofessional employee at Berkeley High School. I have a concern about hazard pay. The certificated staff has received it, yet the classified staff was told that they will not receive it. Some classifieds have been at school this entire time. Help me understand what makes one class worthy, less worthy, excuse me, or not endangered. If hazard pay is given to BFT members for working on campus, then by right, the classifieds who have been ordered back on campuses should immediately qualify. My second concern is about some of the still-ongoing confusion in the Berkeley Unified School District as mentioned in the Berkeley Side article regarding BUSD's plans. Some of the students, teachers, parents, classifieds, and other staff are unsure regarding whether health and safety protocols are not fully implemented, changing without adequate timely notification, or not even put in place, especially for newly arising and developing situations or circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you. Grace Lee. And then, after Grace Lee, we have one last student who's joining us, Violet Kessler. Ms. Charis, her hand isn't raised, but if you could call her after Ms. Lee, that would be great.
Hi. Hi, everyone. My name is Grace Lee. I'm the Program Director of ReThink Disposable, a data-driven waste reduction program of the nonprofit Clean Water Fund. ReThink Disposable has helped over 250 businesses and institutions switch from single-use disposables to reusable foodware. I am hoping to bring our expertise to help BUSD do the same type of work. Since last November, I've been working with a tireless group of reuse champions to help the district make the switch from single-use to reusables. And we've seen, you know, in case study after case study that there are significant cost savings from making that switch. I'm also here to... I'm also here tonight to talk about, well, to thank you for signing the MOU with Clean Water Fund, committing the district to do this work and for your incredible sustainability plan and all the work you've already done to move away from petroleum-based plastic foodware. You know, I would like to also thank you for dedicating staff time, including facilities and nutrition services staff to help with this working group to work together towards a more sustainable foodware system at the district. You've already heard from Samia. I'm not sure if you will get to hear from Violet tonight.
Violet's next.
Oh, awesome. Okay. Yeah, so we've been partnering with students and this group, actually, they are part of Heirs to Our Oceans. They're a youth advocacy group for climate and resource conservation, and we will lean on them to provide service learning opportunities and peer-to-peer engagement. And just basically teach everyone the day-to-day on campus on how the reusables will work. So thank you again for the chance to say hello and I look forward to working with everyone more in the future.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lee. Next, we'll have Violet Kessler.
Hello, my name is Violet Kessler. I am a sixth grader. I am here today on behalf of myself and my sister, who was in fourth grade at Oxford Elementary. Thank you for agreeing to commit to reusables and for your partnership with Clean Water Fund. That helps a lot. However, it doesn't solve all problems. Currently, with the COVID-19 pandemic, disposables are getting ever more popular. Pre-made kits of plastic cutlery are wrapped in plastic bags. Disposable masks and gloves are used to protect essential workers. Theoretically, disposables are healthier. They can be thrown away after one person uses them, preventing germs from spreading among different users. This makes them healthier for us. But what about the health of our environment or the health of the world we're passing on to future generations? We're doing all of this so we can survive, but what about the people living 50, 100 years from now? Is it okay that they have a planet with plastic filling its oceans? A planet that doesn't keep them healthy, just so we can survive the pandemic? Let me tell you this, it's not. We need to get rid of our plastic addiction. We're making so much of it, using up so much non-renewable oil, that sooner or later, we're going to run out. According to the Plastic Pollution Coalition, 17 million barrels of oil are used each year to make plastic water bottles. And that's just a single kind of disposable. What about plastic cutlery? Masks and gloves, cups, takeout containers, or straws? Disposable dinnerware is a big problem. At least half of the disposables I just listed are related to eating and drinking. How many times have you gone to a restaurant, ordered a glass of water with your meal, and had it served you in a plastic cup with a plastic straw? Countless, I bet. And how many times have you drunk that water and tossed the cup and the straw into the trash or trusted the waiter to do it for you? And how many times have you forgotten about it and moved on with your life? Not once recalling the little plastic cup you drank out of at Frank's Family Style Restaurant? Even compostable dinnerware still causes problems. It's made out of paper, which is made from trees. Trees produce oxygen and therefore are essential to human living. Placing these fiber plates and bowls with reusable ones would be healthier for the environment, not to mention cheaper for you. It costs money to purchase all these disposables, even if they're compostable. It costs money to haul them all away after use and then to purchase more when they're gone. Sure, reusables will be more expensive at the beginning, especially with the purchase of dishwashers and cleaning supplies, but after that, there will be no disposables to haul away. There will be no more dinnerware to purchase and the cost will soon be made up. There is nothing stopping BUSD from making the switch to reusable. Although the disposable dining ordinance doesn't apply to schools, following its rules is still the right thing to do. Phase three of this law, which went into effect on July 1st, 2020, and will begin enforcement before the start of next school year, says that all dinnerware must be reusable with exceptions for compostable napkins, wrappers, and straws. Even though compostable dinnerware is better than plastic, it's still a far cry from reusable. Please support Clean Water Fund's initiative for reusables for my sister, my peers, and the few generations of BUSD students. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Violet. Thanks for your work and for being here tonight. All right, we're gonna, as I said at the beginning, if you raise your hand after we start a public comment, you'll be able to speak, but at the public comment period at the end of the meeting, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven more people for this public comment period, the last one being Paz Melendez Canales. But next is Serena Thomas followed by Dwayne Clay. And we have two, two minutes each and again, Vice President Brown will hold up a sign with 15 seconds left. Go ahead, Ms. Thomas.
Hi, my name is Serena Thomas. I'm currently a student at Berkeley High. I'm in 10th grade and my pronouns are she/her. I came by today because I just wanted to talk to you guys about the Bridge program and hopefully extending its funding for future and better opportunities for other Black and Brown students like myself. I first wanted to start off by saying how the Bridge program has affected me in my personal life, both in and outside of school. Even though that there are 34 students in my current cohort from my Bridge class, Ms. Luxford and my current Bridge teacher, Meredith Erby, have stopped, like, non-stop tried to support me and my family anywhere that they can, whether it was with me in school because of me struggling or if it was for housing, because I'm currently not in California, but they're even helping me with that. I also wanted to talk about expanding the funding because of the fact that because there are 34 students in my cohort and yet only one teacher, it's hard for my teacher to manage all of us at once. So I was thinking that it would be better to extend the funding so that we can hire more teachers so that they could actually get paid and that more students will be able to join the Bridge program. Because I've had peers come up to me and ask me about the program because they've known of the success and how much it's helped me personally. And they weren't able to join because there weren't any spots available to them. Now, as a Black and Brown student like at Berkeley High, I've already felt like I'm kind of like a step behind my other peers who are non-POC and I feel like Bridge kind of just helped me get a step forward and advance so that I might be able to get closer to having more of more of an opportunity to access, access college, access better education. Because without Bridge, honestly, like I think I would probably like be failing right now. And yeah, it's just, it's like, it's such an amazing program and I think you guys should really help us out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Thanks for being here. It's great to have so many students tonight. Dwayne Clay followed by Lucero Lupercio.
Hello? Hi, I'm sorry. I'm actually Dwayne Clay's mother. He's a student for Bridge. I was having issues getting in. Perfect. So I have two students that are benefiting from the Bridge program. Being a working mother, that I'm pulled in several different directions. I hate to admit that I'm not as available to their educational goals or understanding to some of the things that are going on now in high school. Bridge has allowed so much support that I cannot even cover it within two minutes, but I'm gonna try. They fill in the gap of my shortcomings. Constant communications to the teachers advocating on my behalf and having, providing them with the tools, the students with the tools to advocate for themselves is just remarkable. I know that when I was in school, I did not have that support, which pretty much I wasn't able to pursue a lot of my dreams because I didn't know. With Bridge, my daughter, for example, was having issues in a certain subject and instantly she had a tutor readily available. I know for myself, having multiple kids in high school, it's really difficult to support their educational needs or financially support them so that they can fully thrive. For me, Bridge is just as what it is as the name. It is a door of support for the students. It allows parents to be active in their kids. It allows the students to be active in their goals. And I know for myself, I have a son that will be attending Berkeley High in the next few years. And if this program is not made available, I don't know what I would do or what my child would do. So eliminating this program or shortening the funding, it would just be devastating on my behalf as a parent. So I hope this helps.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Lucero Lupercio followed by Martine de Mucha Flores. Lucero.
When I start this, good evening Superintendent Stevens and Board members. My name is Lucero Lupercio and I have taught third grade for the past eight years at Sylvia Mendez Elementary. And I am a former Teacher of Color Network co-facilitator. Before I continue with my speech, I would like to thank Associate Superintendent Bajay Tiara for her service to our district. I wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors. I'm here today advocating for the annual stipend that the Berkeley Federation of Teachers has presented to the board. We are asking for a stipend for teachers, speech-language pathologists, and psychologists with a bilingual authorization. We ask that teachers with a bilingual authorization, also known as a BECLAD, receive a $3,500 stipend every year. We are also asking for speech-language pathologists and psychologists to receive a stipend of $2,000. Sylvia Mendez Elementary is a two-way immersion school. What does that mean and why does this warrant an additional stipend for staff? Well, it means that our TK through fifth grade students are receiving instruction in Spanish in all academic areas. The expectation is that students are fully bilingual and bilingual by the time they graduate Sylvia Mendez. While the district has recently worked hard in providing resources in both languages, teachers must still translate materials and use their expertise in Spanish to teach students. 17 classroom teachers, their response to intervention team, literacy coach, science teacher, and music teachers are constantly using their professional translating and web searching skills to find high-quality materials to provide the best resources for our students. My colleagues at Longfellow Middle School experienced similar challenges. Neighboring districts provide a stipend for teachers who hold a bilingual authorization. We want to attract and retain teachers at Berkeley Unified School District. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Martine de Mucha Flores followed by Stephanie Mackley.
Hi. Keelo, you're on. Good evening Superintendent and Board Directors. I really appreciate the time to provide some comments. I wanted to share some points around the Office of Family Engagement and maintaining a level of support that meets the, the resources our Latino, Latina, Latinx families need in the school district. The first is that we need to have additional Spanish-speaking staff for the Office of Family Engagement that can lead direct-wide planning and target engagement for Latino and Latina, Latinx families at all school sites. There are needs to be more responsive, not just Spanish language material, but culturally responsive Spanish language material that really speaks to our families and the students. The other thing is that I want to acknowledge that there wasn't a celebration that was district-wide, district-wide for Sasa Chavez, Salo Suerta, and also include the Filipino Manongs that really call out the, the efforts of the United Farm Workers and the struggle that continues that with that population, especially we think is COVID and that most of these Rasa had to show up to go to work in the fields. The other part is that we still can see a disproportionate impact happening with Rasa response to COVID and not having trusted people in the community who speak Spanish and speak Spanish in a culturally responsive way leads to a lot of misinformation, both about the vaccination and the access to resources in the school, and that's a safe place to return. My last recommendation to the board is in the same way that we are supporting our Black community with a Black student success plan, we also need to have a Latino, Latina, Latina, X student success plan. Thank you for listening and have a great evening.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Stephanie, Stephanie Mackley is next.
Hello. Hi, everyone. I just want to, first of all, like, thank you for taking the time to do this, like, week after week and month after month, like, it's no joke and I just really appreciate all of you and the time that you spend. I am the mom of two kids at Reese Acti. They're sitting here. And it's been really fun for us to listen to, you know, students and community members and teachers. And I'm here to talk about OFEE, but I just have to say first, like, that Bridge program sounds banging. So I'm in full support, just from what I heard. I'd never heard of it before. And yeah, and that 50/50 teacher thing also sounds really great. So I just want to throw my support behind those two things. Because I feel like I got educated tonight. And I'm just one of the, I'm someone who helped to circulate and sign the petition that 248 other folks, parents and Berkeley leaders have signed requesting that we, that we fully, we more, much more fully fund OFEE for at least one full-time staff person at each school. And then, and then also just better infrastructure at the central office. And tonight, when I was, you know, sending, sending information about tonight's meeting around to the, to the other parents I've been organizing with, I, I got sent a copy of this amazing, I was like, oh my God, it's this, the Parents Advisory Committee comments that, that I'm sure you've all already received and, and hopefully reviewed about their really amazing comprehensive assessment of OFEE, which is essentially the same as what I'm requesting. And I just wanted to read a couple sentences because I was really struck by them. It says, "What OFEE is able to consistently provide is more of a service model than an engagement one." And we want it to be an engagement one because that's what it's called. It's a good idea. And we need the opportunity to develop relationships with our prioritized families and amplify their voices, bringing them to the table instead of making decisions on their behalf. That just like really speaks to me. And then I loved this part. "We don't have to reinvent the wheel. The work has been done. The strategies are there. We just have to fund this and like the time is now, so please do that and thank you all for your time."
Thank you so much. Thanks for being here. All right, we have three more commenters. Alexa Villa Cruz will be next, followed by Alaska Ferreira. And then Paz Melendez Canales will be the last one. Alexa, are you there?
Hi, sorry. I wasn't sure if it was my turn. Well, hi, my name is Alex Villa Cruz. I am a senior at Berkeley High and I am also part of the Bridge program. I would just like to tell you guys a little bit about what, how the Bridge program has benefited me or has helped me throughout my high school journey. Not only did it help me in my transition from middle school to high school, but it is now helping me in my transition from high school to college. Without the Bridge program, navigating high school would have not been as easy as it was for me, just because of all the resources that they have to offer, all the free tutoring that they offer and as well as all the other help and the fact that it's like, it's like this little family that really gives you comfort in your journey throughout high school for me personally. Bridge has been a, like, pretty successful in getting their students into college, which is why I strongly believe that it is important for the Bridge program to not only continue to be funded, but to extend, to expand the funding for it to keep it running, you know? I think it's important that it continues to to be offered to students. Even after I leave high school, I have a little sister who is a upcoming freshman and I would like for her to have the same amount of help and resources that I did when I, while I was in Berkeley High. Oh, also, my mom would just like to say a couple of things, if that's okay.
Sure, we have a couple, yeah, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Marina Cruz. I'm, I'm Alexis's mom. And I just want to like say that I'm very thankful for this program, Bridge, who helped a lot Alexa since I'm not able to help her a lot with who helped a lot Alexa since I'm not able to help her a lot with paperwork or any other, like, homeworks or so many things that she got through along by herself with all the support that she got from Bridge. Having her as a part of the family that they become, they did like, um, very, very good connections, like a family, and she got a lot of help for, uh, now that she's going to San Francisco State. Without them, uh, I think she will be like very loose on the path because I, me as a parent, I wasn't able to help her a lot or in, in so many ways. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Um, okay. Next, we have Alaska Herrera, and then our last speaker will be Paz Melendez Canales. Alaska, go ahead.
Hello, good evening. Thank you, Ty Alper. Thanks, everyone, to be here and listen to us. My name is Alaska. I'm a parent of Sylvia Mendez. I have a third grader at Sylvia Mendez, and I'm also the DLEC rep of the school. I want to take this opportunity to highlight the importance of the math intervention programs for our English learners students. According to the Advisory Committee data book that the district showed us in the last fall, there was a significant number of English learners from Sylvia Mendez and also from Longfellow that were in need, in urgent need of this math intervention program. So if we want to pursue the LCAP goals, which are based on letting students to achieve, achieve academic success, I think math should be a priority, along with reading intervention. Along with this, there's another need that impact the education that our English learners receive, which is the, the need to fully fund our 2WA program. So the support provided for the English learners can be consistent, mean more effective. Our PTA cannot afford all the needs that our program ha-have because it's a, it's a unique program, and our students come from a unique background. And that is why, as a parent and talking for the community of parents from Sylvia Mendez, we asked the district to consider a long-term commitment with the funding of the 2WA program to give our students security and hope, so we can all build a better future for them. And lastly, another essential part, it is the need to continue providing culturally-affirming programs to develop leadership in our student body and to help close the achievement gap. So thank you for listening to us, but please, let's try to make a commitment truly, because every step that we take for our English learners, it matters and it is essential.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And our last speaker for this period is Paz Melendez Canales.
Hi, my name is Paz Melendez Canales, and I'm the BUSD parent here to give comments about the Office of Family Engagement and Equity and Lack of District-wide Support for Latinx Families. I'm here to request that the board support additional Spanish-speaking staff for the Office of Family Engagement that can lead the district-wide planning and targeted engagement for Latinx families at all sites. For example, we're concerned that we don't see culturally-responsive Spanish-language parent engagement seminars led by OFEE at a district-wide level. Also, although we're pleased with the recent passing of the QUANDA program, there is still a deep crisis that exists with our Latinx community at BUSD. There's a major achievement gap that has existed for many years. Currently, in reviewing eighth-grade student enrollment rate for, enrollment rate for math support, 43.39% of EL Latinx eighth graders are receiving math intervention as opposed to 3.46% of white students, and more than double the amount of any other group, including special ed. 23.21% of Latinx eighth grade, eighth graders are receiving math intervention as opposed to 0% of the Asian students and 3.46% of the white students percent. We need to go beyond assigning an equal percentage of intervention specialties to each school since the students' needs vary even within the ELS, and usually the funding and FT are not enough to meet those needs. We need to look at this based on student needs. This is a moral issue that cannot be ignored. We need more services in order to address this issue that be, that begins at the elementary level and continues through high school. Our TWI program, which is one of the gems of the district and one of the first culturally-affirming programs offered for Latinx students, needs to be fully funded, and it needs a permanent source of funding. Currently, at Longfellow, for example, whenever TWI bilingual teachers leave or leaves, there's, the, the class needs to take the class in English. They usually, and it has been a problem for years. So there's a big need for a permanent bilingual substitute that can take over when TWI teacher is going to be there. And there's a huge need for a 2-point, point 2FT to coordinate that TWI program at Longfellow, so that this situation does not continue.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Melendez Canales, and thank you, everybody, for your public comment. There'll be another public comment period at the end of the meeting. Now it's time for union comment. I know we have a comment from the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. If there's other union leadership here for comment, please raise your hand. And in the meantime, Ms. Charis, can we play the comment for BFT?
Dr. Stevens in the Berkeley School Board. I'm Matt Meyer, President of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. I come here today excited about the future. We are on the cusp of vaccines being approved for kids as young as 12 and in the near future as young as 2. This will fundamentally change the course of the pandemic, especially in our city with such a high vaccination rate. We're also excited for a return to normalcy and normal schedules next year as our current pandemic MOUs expire. We just entered formal contract negotiations after over a year of emergency negotiations. Our theme this year is rebuild, reconnect, and reinvest. We have identified many current problems our district faces, including recruitment and retention of hardest-stopped positions, which includes special education and meeting our bilingual needs. We're also proposing a middle school advisory structure that will better meet the needs of our students. Escalating medical costs have eaten into raises over the last 15 years, and it is fair that the district and employees share any increases to benefits. At $960 a month for families, future increases are just too large for an employee alone to cover by themselves. Our raise last year, though substantial, only brought us up to average salaries in our region. Our raise in 2019 was the average raise in our region, which means we did not gain in comparison with other districts. We are still in the bottom 20% in total compensation in 2019, 2020. After the parcel tax supporting compensation passed, which we're very happy about, we are not closer to average, but we must continue to see meaningful raises in order to stay competitive. Every year that we are less than average will only make it harder to get to average later without an outside source of funding in the future. Although there will be hard choices to make in the out-years with regards to the BUSD budget, without teachers and classified staff to do the work, the district will find it very challenging to staff our schools and educate our diverse student body. I want to end with a heartfelt appreciation of all of our teachers and staff that have been so flexible this past year with ever-changing circumstances and never-before-seen challenges. You are, you all really pulled through, continue to do so as we finish this year. Happy teacher appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you, President Meyer. I don't, oh, I don't know. Paula, I don't know if that's Paula Phillips. If Ms. Phillips is here officially on behalf of BCCE, I'm assuming not, but no, okay. All right. Then now it's time to go to the committee comments. I think we have a, Aday is here for PAC, and Terry Pastica is here for PNO. Aday, if you want to raise your hand. Okay, why don't we go to you first? There you go, and you have five minutes. Oh, you're muted.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Adivia Senior Meligosa, and I am a parent of a fifth grader at Sylvia Mendez School. Tonight, I am here representing the PAC in the interest of prioritized students at BUSD, which includes students eligible for free and reduced lunch, English-language learners, students in foster care, African-American and Latinx students. The PAC would like to call attention to the unacceptable math outcomes that continue to plague BUSD's prioritized students. The PAC urgently requests our Board of Education and the Superintendent to please launch a TK through 12 restructuring of math education at BUSD in order to drastically improve math outcomes for our prioritized students. As of 2018-19, 82% of BUSD's white eighth graders met or exceeded grade-level standards in mathematics based on the Smarter Balanced Assessment. In stark contrast, only 18% of our African-American eighth graders and half of our Latino eighth graders met or exceeded the grade-level standards in 2018-19. Of the socio-economically disadvantaged eighth graders, 62% did not meet the standards. Valid information is not available for our English learners, reclassified students, or foster care students. In my own experience as a parent of an English learner, a TWI student, and past DLEC rep for Sylvia Mendez, and our DLEC notes have also expressed this, this need, is that there has been little attention on how our teachers of district can successfully support our children to build fluency in both Spanish and English to meet grade level above, grade level or above in mathematics. Since its inception, each PAC has strongly, urgently recommended BUSD to adopt new math strategies that achieve improved results for prioritized students. Tonight, the PAC once again urges the Board of Education and the Superintendent to rectify what we believe is the abandonment of core educational responsibilities for our prioritized students. In our written comments, we recount numerous instances over the past seven years when the PAC has pressed the Board of Education and the Superintendent to take long overdue action. The PAC has repeatedly advocated for reinvisioning of math education in Berkeley Unified School District and the development of a system-wide strategy for effectively teaching math to our diverse BUSD population. Instead, we find that our district continues to implement piecemeal approaches which lack realistic paths to improve our outcomes, accountability, and a coherent TK through 12 system for developing our students' needs in math. We are all here tonight because we all care deeply about our children whose future success rests on the education they receive from Berkeley Public Schools. What they achieve or what they do not achieve is a direct result of the quality of the classroom experiences and the commitment of their educational leaders. With that in mind, please consider the following recommendation. This summer, BUSD will welcome a new Associate Superintendent for Ed Services, Rubén Aurelio. We recommend that the Board of Education and the Superintendent immediately charge Mr. Aurelio with the task of substantially raising math, math outcomes for the LCAP target population. We ask district leadership to declare this goal as a top priority and to ensure sufficient staffing, funding, and leadership support to enable Mr. Aurelio to move quickly and achieve measurable results. Only with this high-level commitment to equity and excellence will BUSD's prioritized students obtain the mathematical foundations and skills they need to have the bright and promising futures they deserve. We will email the board and superintendent our full PAC comments this evening. The full comments also include the pleas we have made at our past, at past board meetings, year after year, for additional math support for our prioritized students. It also includes successful K-5 strategies that have shown promise throughout the year but have not been implemented with fidelity. This includes consistently administering the STAR, math coaches at each school site, and professional learning communities. BUSD leaders, please step up at this critical moment to lead the transformation of our district's math programs for the sake of our prioritized students. Thank you. Gracias. Buenas noches.
Thank you very much. Thanks so much for your service on that committee as well, on the PAC. We really appreciate it. Next, Ms. Pastica from the PNO Committee. Plan, the BSEP Planning and Oversight Committee.
Hello. Can you all hear me?
Yep.
Okay, that's great. Thank you so much. So, good evening. My name is Terry Pastica, and I'm here on behalf of PNO, the Planning and Oversight Committee. It's an advisory body comprised of representatives of every school in the district and makes recommendations to the school board on BSEP and BARA, which are two special tax measures passed by Berkeley voters that supplement school funding. We just finished reviewing numerous budgets related to BSEP that generates an additional $32 million to the district over the baseline property tax, and the majority of that funding goes towards supporting smaller sizes. And BARA, as we just heard, supports teacher and staff recruitment and retention. So at the last meeting, we started with an overview from Superintendent talking, Budget Advisory Committee, again reviewing one-time COVID relief funds, and again looking at the uncertain funding conditions for the district over the next several years, largely due to the unknown factor of if BUSD will be able to recover from the 7% drop in enrollment this year. A question was asked as to if BUSD plans for bringing students back to the classroom across all grades qualified for all-state funding that was available. The next topic we turned to was looking at the BARA tax measure. And while 95% of that funding goes directly into staff compensation, 5% of the revenues are dedicated to providing programs designed to strengthen the recruitment and retention of teacher of colors and strategies for filling historically difficult to fill certificated positions, and that is the portion of the BARA budget that the PNO reviews. So to that end, we looked at a draft budget of about $470,000, most of which went towards staffing positions, such as professional development coordinator positions to facilitate PD opportunities for classified staff. So the PNO asked questions around why these funds might not be routed towards increasing pay for classified staff overall for whom in this next year, I believe, a 7% increase in salary means much less more, significantly less, when considering the stark difference in pay between teachers and support staff. So, for example, concerns over the allocation of funds to professional development staff versus compensation to staff who are primarily made up of persons of color in BUSD and are struggling to make ends meet. And the, and questioning that this disparity is a form of racism within BUSD itself that needs to be addressed. Additionally, there was a request for how much, overall, the district spends on professional development and how that compares to other districts, as well as a request for quantitative information about special ed positions over the last four years outside of COVID, showing the number of open roles and the rate of turnover among these roles, so we have some quantifiable perspectives. A question was also asked as to if BARA funds could be used for recruitment and retention stipends for Longfellow hiring along the lines of those already budgeted for SPED and bilingual positions, which have already been recognized as historically hard-to-hire positions. We then reviewed leftover funds from BSEP Measure A and a draft recommendation to allocate about $22,000 to the Office of Family Engagement and Equity to support programs for non-staffing costs. And then lastly, we looked at a draft proposal regarding the restructuring of duties in the BSEP Director and Community Relations position. Okay, thank you all. That's a summary of what we talked about, and we appreciate the opportunity to check in with you and let you know what we've been thinking about and the questions raised.
Thank you so much, Ms. Pastica. Thank you for your work on the PNO Committee. Okay, I don't see any other committee comments, so I think it's time for board member comments and the superintendent comments. I wanted to start tonight by acknowledging our Associate Superintendent Bajay Tiara, who's, this is her last board meeting with us. And I wanted to take the opportunity, I'm, I'm sure other people will want to speak as well, but I wanted to take the opportunity on behalf of the board and the superintendent and the entire district to thank Ms. Tiara for her service to the district. She joined us two years ago at a time of great transition in the district, and she led Educational Services, our Ed Services Division during a time that I think we all acknowledged was the most difficult. during a time that I think we all acknowledged was the most difficult time for public education in recent memory. We are so grateful, Bajay, for your commitment to equity, for putting students first, and doing it with a portfolio under Ed Services that really touches every aspect of the district. It's personally been a pleasure working with you. I'm really grateful to your service, for your service. Your contributions to the district are going to be remembered long after you've moved on to your next adventure. And I just wanted to thank you, wish you every success in the future, and hope that, hope that my colleagues, and I'm sure that they will join me in the whole community in thanking you for your service to the district. So, thank you so much. And I'm going to leave it there, actually, but I want my comments to be about Bajay. So, thank you. And I will now pass it to, and I want to, and Associate Superintendent Tiara, maybe after folks give public comment, I'd like to turn it over to you to say a few words. Would someone like to go next?
I can go.
Great. Director Miller.
What are you going to do next time when I'm president, and I can't go first? Okay, so yeah, I want to second everything President Alper said. Thank you, Associate Superintendent Bajay Tiara, for everything you've done. Knowing you and working and seeing what you do over the past year has been a great experience for what I want to do in the future and my future career, and it's been really awesome, and I wish you luck on wherever your journey takes you next. Now, speaking to the Berkeley community, I want to say Happy API Heritage Month and Happy Jewish Heritage Month, all for API and Jewish students. Let's, if you are not of those two groups, please take the time to learn the rich history and culture behind those two groups, as they have a lot to share and contribute with our district. I also want to spend the rest of my comments for Teacher Appreciation Week. I want to thank individually all my teachers, especially, my teachers this term, I can call them out by name because they're all great. Mr. Whites, Ms. Coppola, Ms. Matsumoto, Ms. Wells, and Mr. McHugh for all doing a great job and keeping strong throughout this year, and especially in person. I had the opportunity to go back in person this week, and it was really magical to just be on campus again and seeing faces of classmates I haven't seen for so long, and to the teachers working hard and facilitating everything. It's just great, and I have endless thanks for you guys, so.
Okay.
Sorry, go ahead. I was muted. Go ahead.
Okay. Again, Associate Superintendent echoing what President Alper says. I really want to extend my sincere appreciation for all of the heavy lifting that you have done over the last two years. There is no break, you know, and you've gone above and beyond the call of duty in holding together, you know, our special ed during transition, our state and federal projects during transition. I mean, you really held everything in moments of serious transition. So, I wish you the best in your journey. I hope it's a journey and an adventure. And know that you, you know, you always have a home here in Berkeley anytime you want to venture across the bay and say hello. But thank you for everything that you've done. I also want to thank all of the students, well, everybody always, you know, who comes out for public comment, but I really want to give a shout out to the students. You had great representation today, and I, you know, Bridge has a special place in my heart, always has, and I really value the work that Ms. Luxford and all the staff have done and all of the students, because what you saw today was not only the current students who are really benefiting from the program, but students who come back and continue to contribute to the community where they are in college or when they come back to Berkeley. And it's always data reported. We always hear at the end of the year and the beginning of the next year what the outcomes of the Bridge program were. So, I appreciate the tracking, not the most glamorous part of the work, but really just the really high-quality touch that Bridge has on so many students over the last eleven years. And I really appreciate the students who came out about the reusables and to eliminate the plastics, and I look at Assistant Superintendent Filonsby's photo in the back there and know that there are so many pockets throughout the ocean that have islands of plastic. And so, really look forward to the work that's going to be done through the Sustainability Plan and the leadership of our young people. Over the last weekend, Director Abbott and I both had our open office hours, and I want to thank the people who came out on a Saturday afternoon. And there were three specific issues that I talked about with the folks who came out. One was the importance of our literacy program and really making sure that, you know, while we're working on TCRWP, I can never get that acronym right. T-C-R-W-P, did I get it? Did I do it right? That we need to really be looking at how we're implementing our phonics, our Wilson, you know, with integrity and really making sure that our students, who have been struggling with different decoding and phonics, are also getting the support. I think there's been some challenges with Zoom and our kind of distance learning and really kind of hunkering down and making sure the full array of our literacy programs are robust and meeting the needs of our students. We also talked about the mental health needs of all of our families, all of our students, including our staff, and that, you know, it's not just one pocket of our school community that has been challenged over the last year, but it's everybody. And so, how we can look at our COVID resources to bring mental health services into the classroom, into the schools, both through therapy, you know, where it's appropriate, but also within school environments and classroom environments of what kind of support we can give to our children and our students. And lastly, how, and I've talked to Superintendent Stevens about this, how we can make sure we have a very transparent plan about how we're opening up in August. We all have made a very solid commitment that school will reopen in the way that we normally function with five days a week, with everybody who wants to be coming on campus. And we need to be very clear and transparent that we're working through any of the challenges that we might face as we move forward in doing that. So, those are three very specific things that came out of my discussions in my office hours. I am looking forward to the housing presentation tonight. We're moving forward around workforce housing. It's just the first step of the discussion around the, around working with a consultant or with a developer, and I'm looking forward to actually ongoing community engagement as we embark down this process. So, there's a lot of opportunity for neighbors, for teachers, for staff to continue to be engaged, and part of the consultants who are going to be coming forward, that's their job, is to make sure that engagement is very robust. And the last two things, and I'll be quick, is, and I think President Meyer mentioned this, it looks like Pfizer is going to be approving vaccines for 12- to 15-year-olds as early as Friday or early next week. So, I know that at least our organization where I work, as well as the people in the county and the city who are doing vaccines all over the area, are definitely going to be doing a big push to make vaccine accessible to young people ages 12 and up. So, I continue to encourage, if you haven't been vaccinated yet, to consider it, and if you have questions or concerns, to please talk to your primary care provider to get those questions answered and to look into getting your young people vaccinated. And lastly, I just really want to appreciate all of the tremendous work that the PAC has done as they're looking at these budget recommendations, the thoughtfulness and the time that they're putting in to doing the research, to going back and looking at previous year's recommendations, and then coming forward, like you heard today and you heard at the last meeting, very cogent recommendations for how to address the needs of our prioritized students in the context of our overall district plan. We talked a lot about math in the last meeting, and I just know, you know, from many of us who've been around for a long time, when math outcomes are year after year after year problematic, you can't just keep throwing intervention services at them and assume that it's the students' fault. We have to look at it from our curriculum and our instructional practices to try to understand why our students aren't succeeding in math. It's not their fault. We have to take responsibility for it. So, I hope that the recommendations that the PAC makes around this, we take seriously, and we really look at what we can do to strengthen the math curriculum in our district. Thanks.
Thanks, Director Sana. Director Vassadov.
Yes. Hi. Good evening, everyone. I also want to echo my deep appreciation for Associate Superintendent Bajay Tiara. Bajay, we didn't get to work too long together, but I so appreciated your work on the English Language Master Plan, the thoughtfulness that you put into that work, the fact that you were pushing us to be a more culturally responsive district, and just the way that you interact with community. I so appreciate you, and I wish you the best of luck on your future endeavors. I echo what my colleague, Director Sana, said. I hope you come over and visit us in Berkeley, and when we finish the master plan, we'll have a party together, because I know that your heart was really in that effort. And so, I'll be the first one to call you when it's done, and when the ink is still fresh. So, thank you. Thank you so much. I also want to thank everyone for your public comments tonight. I was especially moved by our students and former students who came out to give public comment, and to our young environmentalists who came today. Just know that you have an ally on this board. All your comments really resonated with me, and I'm so impressed and, you know, feeling really hopeful about our efforts to tackle the climate crisis in our schools. So, thank you. To our Latinx advocates, thank you for your comments about how OFI can better serve our Latinx families at a district-wide level. I share your concerns, and I look forward to the OFI presentation tonight. I hope that the people that are here stay for that presentation as well. I also really appreciated the comments from the PAC, and I think, you know, my colleague Director Sana touched on them, but really, I think, you know, Ali, in your comments, you nailed it. We don't need a piecemeal approach. We need a comprehensive approach to tackling these issues. And so, I really appreciated the thoughtfulness that went into those comments and learning about the history of the PAC from both, you know, my colleagues, Director Babett and Director Sana, I realize that this has been going on for a while, and we really need to come up with some comprehensive way to address these issues. So, thank you. Tonight, I'd like to start off by saying Happy National Teacher Appreciation Week. I'm very grateful to our educators and all their hard work this year. This has probably been the hardest year to be a teacher, and I can't thank you enough for everything that you've done for our students, not only the academic support that you provided this year, but more importantly, the social-emotional support, especially for our students who have lost loved ones to COVID-19. So, thank you, and I know that we kicked off the beginning of the year with these wonderful conferences, family conferences, and a lot of educators just took that time to really just get to know their families and ask them, "How do you want us to engage with you?" And I think that level of social-emotional support this year from our teachers, you know, needs to be recognized. So, I really appreciate you. And I learned so much from my colleague, Director Brown, who is a teacher. I'm really lucky to have her on this board. So, Happy Teacher Appreciation Day to you, Director Brown. I also want to wish everyone a Happy Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. I'd like to invite you all to a really exciting panel that we're hosting tomorrow with our AAPI BUSD community called Hear Us Now. This panel is focused on addressing anti-Asian racism in our country. As many of you know, my colleagues and I passed a resolution to denounce hate aimed at our AAPI community a couple of weeks ago, but a resolution only goes so far, right? It's not something that can just sit on the website. We really need to put this into action. And so, I'm really excited that tomorrow night at 7:00 PM, you can hear directly from six members of the BUSD Asian American community. You'll hear from students, parents, teachers, and staff. We also have a professor of Asian American Studies at Cal, Professor Kataria Um, who will be here too, to kind of put this into, you know, historical context for us, like what's happening now. It's not new. It's racism that's deeply entrenched in our culture and our society and our country. And so, I'm really looking forward to having that thoughtful dialogue with everyone. These panelists will be talking not only about the serious crisis in the Bay Area and across the country over the past year, as cases of anti-Asian racism in the form of discrimination, harassment, and violence have escalated, but also the historical roots of hate and racism against people of Asian descent in the United States. I can't wait to see you all tomorrow. It's at 7:00 PM. The district sent out information about this. We also have a wonderful website with resources to celebrate AAPI Heritage Month. I'm really excited, looking forward to the conversation, and it's going to be the first of many. So, this is, you know, this group is a newly coalesced group. The parents are coming out for the first time. This is their first event. So, I hope that our community rallies around them and really embraces them and supports them, but it's not going to be the last. So, this is the first of many, and thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you, Director Vassadov. Director Babett? Wait, did you go? No. Go ahead.
Well, my colleagues have said it all. So, in an effort to save time, I think the only thing that's been missed is Happy Mother's Day. So, thank you all for everything, and I echo all of their sentiments.
Thank you, Director Babett. Vice President Brown.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us. Tonight at the Board meeting, I would also like to thank those who spoke to us during public comment, offering support for OFI math outcomes, sustainability, and support for our teachers. And like my colleague Director Sana said, I'm especially proud of our brilliant and eloquent students who spoke this evening. I appreciate your words, and I am inspired by your advocacy. There are so many things to celebrate this week and month in addition to Mother's Day and Cinco de Mayo. It is also the month of May, and so, in the month of May, we celebrate Asian Pacific American Heritage Month and Jewish Heritage Month. And so, to all of our Asian Pacific American Jewish community members, we take this time to celebrate you this month and always, and appreciate your major contributions to our schools and to our society. It is also one of my favorite weeks in my teaching year because it is Teaching, Teacher Appreciation Week around the country. And I've been spending the past few days bawling my eyes out crying, reading all of the Facebook posts, Google presentations, watching all of the TikTok videos that were created and intended to appreciate teachers all around the country. And teachers have a huge impact on students and their families and their caregivers, a assist in improving outcomes for students, and sometimes help to bridge the gap and make the difference in the student's life. On a personal note, I heard from a former fifth grader who is about to enter into her senior year of high school, and she shared those appreciations with me. I would also like to thank Director Vassadov for her appreciation and teacher shout-out this evening. Today is the last Board meeting for Associate Superintendent Bajay Tiara, like the rest of my Board colleagues have said, and Bajay, I just want to take the time on a personal note to just say thank you for all of your contributions. You helped us get through an incredibly difficult year and with your partnership with the rest of the staff at BUSD. We just want to say thank you and celebrate you for everything that you have done. You have an incredible resume and brings, brought so much talent and support to BUSD, and I just want you to know that your effort is not going unnoticed and that you are appreciated, and hopefully, you will continue to maintain really wonderful relationships with all of us because you are truly a gem. So, thank you and good luck in your future endeavors.
All right. Thank you, Vice President Brown, Dr. Stevens, and then we'll give Ms. Tiara, Associate Superintendent Tiara, the last word.
Great. Thank you very much, President Alper, and hi to everybody. Thank you for being here this evening. I want to start my remarks on a bit of a sort of solemn note and acknowledge the passing of our girls volleyball coach, James Manuel. This took place just very recently. Please know to his family, to his three children, his wife Kimberly, that our hearts are with you and that we all collectively are marking the contributions that he made to so many students at Berkeley High School. It's people like your husband, like your father, who really make a difference for our students, and it's the sort of heart of Berkeley Unified that we count on over and over again, our employees, our coaches, all the folks who serve our students. So, please know that we're thinking about you. You are in our thoughts. I also want to acknowledge what is, I think, just a truly remarkable return to in-person schools that has taken place over the last couple of weeks. I've now had a chance to visit nearly all of our elementary schools. I think I'm just short Washington Elementary School. I've been to all of our middle schools and plan to visit the high school just next week as well. And uniformly, what I see across all of our campuses is positivity, joy, energy, folks coming back to enjoy each other's presence, the joy of learning in a way perhaps that we all didn't appreciate before the pandemic. So, to all of our teachers, our classified staff, our principals, after-school staff, everybody who's been putting their heart into getting us reopened and serving our students, thank you to all of you. And that, I think, it's fitting, a couple of weeks after school reopening, that we arrive at Teacher Appreciation Week. And that, I think, it's fitting, a couple of weeks after school reopening, that we arrive at Teacher Appreciation Week. And so I want to, in addition to calling out of all of our classroom teachers, call out our after-school staff, our early childhood education staff, our counselors, and our instructional staff, we're in BCC-E. I include both our after-school program staff and our instructional assistants in that group. Every one of you, especially, every one of you makes a difference, and please know from all of us that we really see the effort and appreciate it very much. We're in the middle right now, very interesting period of community engagement, and we hope that all of members of our Berkeley community will join us for any one of the number of very rich community discussions taking place in the evenings over the last few weeks and extending through May and into June. As examples of this community engagement, just in the last week, we've hosted two health panels, one in English, one in Spanish, with partners from UCSF and Youth Uprising. These are excellent, very informative, health-related panels for families who have questions about safety protocols, about vaccinations and their safety. These videos are available online, and we welcome you to check them out on our website. We're also hosting a whole series of L cap workshops. These are workshops designed for parents who'd like to become more informed about the district's budget. We just finished a series of these last week, one in English, one in Spanish. And we're appreciative of all the families who joined, who were able to take part in the conversation with us. We will be hosting additional workshops, and these will focus on intervention programs and racial equity programs. So please do look out for these announcements and join us at any one of these evening panels. A special shout-out and thank you to BFT for co-hosting with us in a feedback session with about 50 educators to think about the use of our COVID funding. We are very appreciative to have the sort of deep perspective of teachers all over the district coming together in a Zoom format to share their thinking about what would best support families and students. So thanks for that. And then tomorrow evening, welcome all Berkeley members to join us for a very special co-hosted panel that's called Hear Us Now. We're very happy to be working with a group of AAPI leaders, both parents and teachers, who have come forward and offered their perspective, their experience, their wisdom to the district in helping us put together what we hope will be a healing and informative hour together. So that's tomorrow evening at 7:00. Please check our website for the link. And then I also want to acknowledge that we're very excited about news about vaccinations that seem to be coming our way in any way that Berkeley Unified can support the city of Berkeley and other health organizations to distribute vaccines to our young people, including those in the category of 12 to 15. Please know that we are in active conversations with the city and look forward to exploring any opportunities we can to be able to support this effort. And then finally, I want to, alongside of my governance team colleagues, offer a heartfelt thanks to Bajie Tiara, who has served as, for the last two years, as our Associate Superintendent of Education Services. Bajie, you and I started together. We started under very interesting circumstances, as there was a major transition taking place in the district. And I watched as you very quickly got to know the various roles in Ed Services. At one point, you joked to me at the end of last year that there wasn't a job in Ed Services that you hadn't had to do personally. I know that you learned a lot from it, but the district, more than anything, benefited from your willingness just to jump right in and take care of everything that came your way. As if that weren't enough, we arrive in this current school year where it seemed like the sort of, you know, the bottom fell out of the boat. And so I've watched over the course of the year, as you've just remained tenacious and really persisted through experiences that not one of us could possibly imagine or have prepared for. So as you depart the district, please know that you have a grateful ally in me. Very much look forward to seeing where you land next, but do know that you have my heartfelt appreciation as well. And I'm looking forward to wrapping up with you in the next week, as you then move on to the next steps in your career. So thank you very much, Bajie. We all acknowledge your presence here, and thank you for your work.
Thank you, Dr. Stevens, Associate Superintendent.
Hey, Chi, can I make a quick request? Can we bring her on by unmuting and making some noise and really clapping? Because if we were in person, the room would just be roaring right now. So I'm just gonna ask my board colleagues and all the panelists to please unmute, and let's make some noise for our Assistant Superintendent Bajie Tiara. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Oh, hear your noise.
If you hear me, you'd be incredibly uncomfortable. But thank you, I greatly, I really do appreciate it, Superintendent Stevens, directors and BSUD community. Thank you for all the kind sentiments and recognition of both my contributions and that of the Educational Services Team. This is truly humbling work. Although I will have only been in Berkeley for two years, I'm confident that my contributions to BUSD have made a difference for our students. BUSD faces many of the same challenges other districts do, and I believe that the re-envisioned Educational Services Division stands ready to continue in addressing these challenges without skipping a beat. I'm truly grateful to my team and to the staff that supports me. In my time with BUSD, I've come to respect and admire the people of this community as tireless, passionate advocates for students. This gives me great faith that BUSD's best days lie ahead, regardless of what unprecedented and unpredictable challenges are placed in its way. Again, I would like to express my sincerest appreciation, excuse me, for the opportunity to have had to serve and to share in your mission of improving the educational experiences for Berkeley Unified students and families. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. That was a long but rich public comment session, period. And I just want to remind my colleagues that it's 8:40, and that we have a number, and everybody who's presenting as well, that we have a number of items on the agenda. So I'm hoping we can move through them thoroughly but efficiently. The next thing we will be doing is the consent calendar. So is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President Brown. There's the, I'll second it. Ms. Tyra, can you call the roll? Ms. Tyra, are you with us?
Director Miller, can you hear me?
Yep, now we can.
Director Miller?
Yes.
Director Vassadov?
Yes.
Director Babid?
Yes.
Director Sainai?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
I'm assuming she's gonna, you were gonna call me next, yes. Thank you, Ms. Tyra, and whoever else is there with you. Okay, then we now will move to the first discussion item, which is Dr. Stevens' update on the phase plan for school reopening.
Thanks very much, President Elper. I am going to keep this evening's presentation pretty quick. As I mentioned in my remarks, you know, we are now open across all of our school levels. We do know that we have very high percentages of our families coming back. We went through a very difficult period of reorganizing our elementary schools in order to provide a full-time learning experience for students at the elementary level, both in-person and distance learning. And we are, for the next five weeks, sort of looking forward to celebrating the end of the school year. I'm going to focus pretty heavily on graduation events in my update. But do know that this is a pretty deliberately short presentation tonight, just given where we are in the school year and our many accomplishments to reopen. So I'll talk a little bit about a few things taking place at the elementary, middle, and high school, and then again, reiterate our very strong commitment to reopen fully at five full days per week at all of our levels in the fall. So with respect to elementary schools, right now, all of our schools are planning in-person and virtual graduations. The first news is that elementary schools' open house has been canceled this year. We were hearing lots of feedback from teachers and principals that their full attention continues to be on school safety and in-person instruction. And so while we do typically look forward to that event in the spring of every year, given the givens, given everything that our staff had on their plates, we decided that this was the best decision at this point. And then a variety of activities are taking place for fifth-grade graduations at our elementary schools, including in-person graduation events. And as well, recordings of those events will be made available for families who are not able to attend for one reason or another. All students who are graduating from their schools will be read aloud, all schools will be, all students will be honored. And I especially appreciate the work of our schools director, Debbie Dean, our high school principal, Juan Regosa, John Villa Vicencio at the high school, as well as all of our principals to make this a reality with a relatively short amount of notice. So thank you to every one of you. At the middle schools, we have a number of updates as well. At this point, every single one of the middle school transportation requests that we've received from schools has been met. We are in the process of bringing students to our elementary, our middle schools rather. And in fact, for some of our inter-district permit students are going as far afield as Richmond and Hayward to be able to pick up students who need rides. Our morning program is also now fully staffed and operating at each of the three middle schools, including cohorts of about 50 students each at King, Willard, and Longfellow. And then eighth-grade graduations is going to be a blowout event this year. We are working with a professional event planner to do in-person outdoor events on all three of our campuses. And those events will be livestreamed for families who are not able to attend. Our middle school principals are doing yeoman's work right now to pull all of this together, and we're very appreciative of them. And then finally, at the high school, we're working under the current CDPH guidelines about larger events to conceive of senior graduation events over the course of three days. We do know that we're not permitted to have a very large graduation event under these circumstances. And so the high school team has very creatively divided the graduation events over the course of three days, June 4th through June 6th. And what I'm displaying now is a finalized schedule for a variety of in-person graduation events. That includes a number of identity-based graduation events taking place on Friday, June 4th. And you can see that these begin early in the morning and stretch on into later in the evening. We are required, according to CDPH guidelines, to stagger each in-person event by two hours. That's to permit cleaning, to make sure facilities are completely empty. We're actually renting a parking lot to be able to provide families parking, added parking, so that coming and going from these graduation events is more convenient to all of our families. So here's Friday's schedule. Here, we're looking at the schedule for Saturday, June 5th. You can see academic choices listed here, the Latinx graduation event, as well as AMPS. Again, long days for our Berkeley High School staff, for it to stretch all the way from 9:00 in the morning to 9:00 PM. And then on Sunday, June 6th, we continue on with graduation events. You can see that BIHS, International Baccalaureate, is here as well. We have BIS, the RISE Program, BTA. And then we have our graduation ceremony for our multilingual program, as well as Bridge, which was mentioned earlier in public comments, graduating later on Sunday evening. So again, our thanks to the entire team, both elementary, middle, and high school for pulling all of this together. And then we extend our thanks in advance to all of our students and families who understand that we are working very diligently to comply with all public health guidelines as it really relates to these in-person graduation events. These will look and feel a little bit different. There are going to be some inconveniences. We will observe screening protocols, social distancing, mask-wearing will be mandatory. So please do have patience with us as we attempt this very large and unprecedented set of graduation events this year. Here, in case families haven't had a chance to see it, are those CDPH guidelines. We are right now urging folks not to invite people from out of state to attend any of these events. This is prohibited by the California Department of Public Health. So please refrain from those out-of-state invitations. All of the events are outdoors. We are strictly observing the 33% venue capacity rule. And as I said before, we'll have a number of rules in place to protect the safety and well-being of all of our attendees. And then, as I mentioned, all of these events will either be recorded or livestreamed so that families who are not able to or not comfortable attending in person will be able to participate from the comfort of their own homes. And then finally, I conclude tonight just by reiterating what we said a number of times, that it is our full intention to return to a complete, full-time, in-person learning experience for all of our students at all levels in the fall. We are planning to share more details on May 19th about some of the contingency planning that we're doing right now. That will include approaches to offering a limited set of distance learning options to families in the fall, as well as how we might overcome a variety of improbable but improbable scenarios for the fall, which we nonetheless will take seriously and plan for. So we're looking forward to sharing a few more details, beginning on May 19th, about contingency planning. And then finally, our thanks to the entire community, wherever you right are right now, whether you're attending school on campus or learning still from home. Please know that we are a district, we are deeply grateful to our Berkeley community for the way we've hung in there through this very long year. And it is, again, just a delight to be able to see so many families and children and staff together and to re-experience the joy of what makes Berkeley Unified such a special place. It's us being together in a community, and we're feeling this in brand-new ways. So thank you to every single one of you. We will just continue onward into the next step of our path together.
Thank you, Dr. Stevens. This was meant as a brief update, but if there's any urgent questions that any of my colleagues have, let me know. Director Vassadov?
Really quickly, Dr. Stevens, thanks for that quick recap. When do you think that families can get more information about the virtual events, formats, et cetera?
Director Vassadov, do you mean for the graduation events?
The virtual graduation events, correct.
Yeah, I do imagine that some schools are already beginning that communication. I know that all of our school teams are really hustling to put this together. And so all of that community will be, sorry, all of that communication will be managed by schools themselves. So none of this is being organized centrally, because each school's campus is so different, and each school's approach is somewhat unique. So families should just pay attention to communication coming from their teachers and their principal about these events. And I would expect something very shortly, I imagine, within a week or two at the latest.
Great. And is the information going to be sent out in Spanish, too?
Yes, yeah, we will ensure that all of our communications are translated.
Wonderful.
Director Babid?
I just wanted to make sure that we are all hands on deck and scheduled, because you know it, with all those graduations, usually there is a board member there. So that needs to get coordinated as soon as possible. Thanks.
Yeah, we're on it. Well, go ahead, Dr. Stevens.
Look, I'm just making sure you don't put it all on the rookies, right on.
Good point, Director Babid.
No, we are on it. Right now, I'm working with my assistant, John Villa Vicencio, just to begin to coordinate board members appearances at any one of these, I think, 11 or 14 graduation events taking place on that single weekend. And please know that you're all very, very welcome.
Thank you. Director Sana?
A couple of quick questions. One is, if we move into yellow by the time graduation happens, will the will the numbers change in the sense of how many people can attend? Will we adjust accordingly?
We've right now established an invite list, or rather, invite limit for each student of four invitees. I don't know that we will have that much flexibility. We're right now just calculating all of the capacities, especially of the football field. And so I don't know, actually don't know the answer. The difference in the capacity is essentially 33% to 25%. I haven't been able to think with the Berkeley High School team what that might mean, and if that could lead to an adjustment in the number of invitees per graduation event.
Okay. Just so that we can make sure we can communicate with folks. And then my other question is for the distance learning program. So right now, our distance learners at the elementary level are now kind of in a DL program. Will those students be asked, the fifth graders be invited to be involved in the matriculation events at their homeschool? And are they in the process of being notified the same as their in-person classmates?
The answer to both of those questions is yes. So students who chose distance learning will graduate from their homeschool. We're not hosting a virtual learning, or sorry, distance learning program graduation. And then the schools are managing all of the communication to students who are both attending in person and their students who are attending classes online right now.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Stevens. Next, we will move to item 12.2, which is an update on the Office of Family Engagement and Equity. I see Ms. Colagari is here.
Greetings, everyone. Before I get started this evening, I would also like to chime in and to thank my colleague Bajie Tiara for all of her hard work. We've worked closely together, in particular with the African Success Framework. Thank you so much. That is under her department. And I'm just really sorry that it took me so long to really get to know the brilliance that you bring to our district. And it's not always the case, it's when people are leaving that you realize. So thank you so much, and I treasure our friendship and hope that will continue. I would like to share my screen. Dr. Stevens, were you sharing it? Because I'm happy to share mine.
If you'd like to go ahead, that's just fine.
Awesome, thank you. And let's. And let's, it's more on there than I realized. Okay, there we go. And.
Ms. Calagueri, turn, will you just introduce yourself for the, for people who might not know you? I, I, I mentioned you.
You're seeing my entire presentation backwards here. I'd be happy to do that. Yes.
Thank you.
I apologize. There we go. Okay, greetings, everyone. My name is Ann Kelly Gary, and I supervise the Office of Family Engagement and Equity. I am really happy to be here to present with Dr. Stevens, although I think we only have a slide or two for you, Dr. Stevens. And also with another colleague or partner, Ms. Duffy Ross, who is going to be joining me in this presentation. I am responsible for the Office of Family Engagement and Equity, like I said. And my hand just hit the screen and it just did that. There you go. So today, what I'd like to start off with doing, and I apologize for the order of everything, so the presentation today is going to be backwards. So let's start with the agenda. We are going to start off with some introductions. And then I'm going to talk to you about the transformative family engagement that we have been doing in our district, but really are putting the language to the work that we're doing. We'd like to continue talking about the pandemic and the work that we did during the past year. So big surprise, right? Continuing with the capacity building programs that we have put in place, and we do have one that we're going to highlight for you. Talking about our partnership, and that's where my, one of our partners from Berkeley Schools Fund will be joining us. I want to talk about Ophi's vision for our families, which is included. Or which I heard a lot said in public comments and by School Board Director Anasov today. And also, last but not least, we're going to talk about next steps. And Dr. Stevens is going to be helping me with that part. My keyboard is very sensitive, so I am going to very cautiously go to the next slide. So what I really wanted to do with the slide is to introduce you to our team. And the title of this slide is mirroring our community. And if you will see that that is indeed what our team is, a group of people that mirror the community that we serve. I don't recognize that person up top. That picture was taken a year ago. But I feel like I have aged about twenty years this past year. It's been quite a year. I'd like to introduce, actually, I'd like to have our parents to introduce our, our team. And I have some quotes that I'd like to share with you about them. About Irma Parker, at a meeting, at many meetings I've attended, I've heard parents say that they answer the phone when they see her number, not when they see others from the district, but when they see her number. About Laura Rivas. I, I'm going to do this in Spanish. And I am not a native Spanish speaker, but I think it will honor the parent who made this comment. And she states. I am so grateful for the support that you have given us during this challenging time. She continues to say that you have truly been a blessing to our community. About Carol Perez, it's, I think it's truly amazing how you balance all, how you balance it all. You are amazing, in caps, really. About Jocelyn. Yes, about Jocelyn, you are my family. And that's heavy praise. But it is definitely reflective of the work that we do. About Letty, thank you so much for your help. I was able to make my kids, I was able to help my kids because of you. About Federico, I could not have done it without you. Thank you for making it easy for me. I'd like to add that both Federico, or Tito, as he's known, and Lily were voted the heart of the district by their schools last year because of the hard work that they, that they did. And the hard work that all of our team does for the families in our district. And last but not least, what I've been hearing about our new members of the team. Nabet, Ahmed, and Ramona McGary, who started the end of March. Great to work with, exclamation point. And I'm just really thrilled to hear that because that really, they add to a team of caring family engagement staff who have done amazing work this past year and before for our community. And I noted just now that we, that the last two members started the end of March, which means that during the pandemic, it was the rest of us that were serving the entire district. And you will see some of the work that we've been able to do. So transformative family engagement centers, students, families, and educators as leaders and designers of systems change in our schools and district. And this is a quote from Bay Area Plan, an organization that taught me many years ago as a parent, how to advocate for my children in schools and what's led me to do this work right now. I'm showing you this slide because I wanted you to see that we are putting our students, our families, and, and our educators at the center because we feel that it is important that we look at all to be able to really design the systems that will promote the outcomes that we want for all of our students. This year, some of the, the things that we have done that will transform the work that we do and will transform family engagement in our district are things like the affinity town halls. We had our African-American Town Hall, Spanish-speaking Town Halls, Latinx Town Halls. These are town halls that were initiated by the Office of Family Engagement and Equity in support with the Office of the Superintendent to be able to bring in the voice of all of our parents. And it is from the voices of our parents that we are looking forward now, thinking, how do we bring everyone together to transform our district into what our, our, our parents, what our families want our district to be? And we started doing so with our learning circle. And I'll give you a highlight of the learning circle. But this is a project that was brought together, that was brought to me by Nina Goldman from the City of Berkeley, Twenty Twenty Vision. And the goal of this project really is to bring school leaders and parents together to a partner to transform our educational system to what are, what are, what are really our families want our educational system to be, but also engaging the parents who are not normally seen as equal or equitable partners with our leaders to make these decisions. Our Black History or Tropical Fest is another opportunity that we've taken to be able to engage our, our students. And to, to hear their voices. But just keep in mind that what we are doing is not just hearing and uplifting their voices. It's also an opportunity to engage our families and our school staff who play crucial roles, roles in preparing and supporting students to be able to share their voices. And last but not least, our community partners, who you will see, have been crucial, especially during this pandemic. They've always been crucial, but everything has been highlighted for us. This pandemic really has highlighted a lot of needs for us. So helping our families during this pandemic, the pandemic just blew us all for, in a tizzy about a year ago. It was a really challenging time, and we had to really stop and, and, and sit for a moment and figure out how do we find out what's going on in our, with our families? What's going on in their homes? What is it that they need? Because we immediately came home, everyone came home, so we did not have the, the same level of communication. So we really had to transform family engagement, you know, on, on a dime, which is what we did. So immediately, we did wellness checks, and the wellness checks that we did informed us on how we needed to transition and what we needed to focus on in the work that we were doing. And if you'll notice, we did quite a few wellness checks immediately within the first month or two. And ongoing to this moment, we are in contact with our families. And we found out about their fears and isolation, the loss of income, food, housing, et cetera. And so what did we do immediately about wellness? We called, when we call our families, we listened. Our staff were like social workers. We were friends, we were family, we were school staff. We were people who listened to our families and then immediately jumped to help with meeting the needs that they had for the unhoused. We worked with our Hope Department internally and with the city externally. For basic needs, we worked with our nutrition services and with Berkeley Food Network to be able to support our families. With housing instability, our families needed help with paying rent. We also worked with the city and county programs to help them sign up for those programs. And for loss of income, we made sure that our families knew that we were there for them, but also we worked with our partners to be able to help them with some urgent needs until they were able to get the financial, their, 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 their wages replaced by you know, whatever it means, whether it were unemployment, which you all know was delayed, or whether they were able to return to work. One of the, our partners really stood up and worked with us to support our families in, in a very real way is Berkeley Public Schools Fund. We immediately began having conversations about how do we take the resources? How, how, how are they going to fundraise? How are we going to take those resources that they did raise? To be able to meet our families' basic needs. And so this organization that normally raised lots of money to provide funds for field trips and the different programs for our classroom teachers and, and for our district programs. Turned that around and said, we're going to put money, we're going to put cash in our families' hands to be able to help them through this time. And our family engagement, it, it is our department that partnered with Berkeley Public Schools Fund to develop systems to be able to distribute these funds, and you'll see how many, how many, how many people we served. And the amount of payments that we've made is over four hundred thousand dollars now. And I just saw that there's a Berkeley side article that speaks specifically, specifically to what has been done. Berkeley Public Schools Fund also gave us nine hundred gift cards that our team had to identify families and get these cards to our families in the month of November and December of last year. We partnered with Berkeley Holiday Fund. They provided eighty-one families with twelve thousand dollars to, to help these families with the holidays. And I, I would be remiss if I did not give a huge shout out to our PTAs. Thank you, thank you, thank you. You've made a huge difference in the lives of our families by putting aside funds that our OFI team has access to, to be able to meet urgent needs of our families. And this is what we've been doing before the pandemic, but it's been stepped up and really supported and extras given as needed. While we were meeting our families' basic needs, we also continued our work with family education and empowerment. At the very beginning of the pandemic, and actually, our, it really started in the fall when we came back from the summer. Because remember, the pandemic was supposed to be over with. Over the summer, we were to come back, but did not happen. We jumped into gear and put on four district-wide seminars. And so you'll know also, all of these seminars were translated in Spanish. And these seminars dealt with our, the needs of our families, which are technology, the socio-emotional help in distance learning, thriving in distance learning and resilience. This is what we heard from our families that they needed, and this is what we did. The average number of attendees was hundred and twenty-five at these seminars. We also, I, I will tell you a little bit more about our parent principal learning circles in a moment. This year, we also had our Black History or Tropical Fest. It's an annual event that was brought to us by parents. And I am just really thankful for all the support with these programs. Because with the basic needs that we met this year, there's no way we could have put on these programs without, without that, that level of support. And last but not least, our district-wide affinity town halls that I referenced before, our OFI team. You know, we really push to make sure that our families' voices are at the table. And, and you hear them at the board meetings because we also listen to our parents, and we encourage them to come and to let you know what they're thinking and just know that this is, whether it is something we want to hear or we don't want to hear, right? We push to make sure that our parent voices are at this table. So in building the capacity of our families and our educators, the Black African-American Parent Principal Learning Circles Project, like I said, was brought to me by the City of Berkeley. It, we call it the Learning Circles Project. It is the Black African Principal Learning Project because based on the data, we felt that it was extremely important for us to focus initially on our black parents and their relationships and partnerships with our schools. And so what we did in this project was we brought together K eight principals and parents and guardians for four meetings, three meetings thus far, the fourth is going to be in May eighteenth. And at these meetings, our parents and principals listened to each other. Our parents had the opportunity to let our school staff know how they felt or what they felt about how their kids were being treated at school, the school climate, the outcomes of their students, and their desire to really partner to make sure that their children's climate, school climate was conducive to the education and then the educational experiences that they want for their kids. Bay Area Plan also says we must build the dual capacity of families and educators for family engagement to transform student learning experiences and outcomes. And for us, building the capacity of our parents and our educators is crucial. And this, we believe, is the beginning of that. And you will see in our vision for the district how this will be transformed for other affinity groups as well. In our fourth meeting, that's going to take place, like I said, on May eighteenth. We are looking at transitioning this work now from a district level to a site level. This is family engagement in its truest form, because that's what it is. It's about engaging our families with our school staff so that they are truly partnering to give their children the educational experiences and outcomes that they need. I know I repeated it, but I felt that it was important to do so. Transitioning to our district partnership development. This year, like everything else, like I said, it just made everything bigger. But these are some of the partners and some of the work that we have done over the years and did more so this year. Berkeley Public Schools Fund, I've mentioned before, Archie Fisher Educational Enterprises. I bring this organization up because this is the organization that's been hired by the district to support our African-American Success Framework, but they are also running a STEM Steps program for students. In addition to that, we are we have nominated, our district for the first time has nominated seventy-two students for the African-American Student Achievement and Excellence Award. I, I know when I first came, it was one or two students. And last year, it was quite a few more. Now it's up to seventy-two students. It is all a part of, of the framework. We need to come from every angle. Our students need to be encouraged. While our parents and our educators are partnering to make their experiences better for them. We also had a hundred and twenty B U S D parents, guardians, and staff that attended the. that attended the area conference, which is African American Regional Educational Alliance Conference. And that is the first year, last year, it was 22 and we were doing backflips. This year is 120. So I'm just overjoyed. We also, over the years, we have worked with Sisya Chavez, the Lord's Work Documentative Committee. Our last major event was in 2019. We had our essay contest, which is annual, and it's been an amazing experience to do the essay contest. We were talking about re-envisioning the contest and the pandemic hit. Celebrando comunidad en la Placita. We had that in 2019. It is an amazing event. I co-hosted that in that year. It was music. It's, it's, it's community in the park. And it's at the beginning of the year and it's an opportunity to bring our school community together as well. Arcade College School Supply giveaway, 1,500 bags, even during the pandemic, we were able to continue getting these resources to families. And, you know, our Berkeley Food Network, I have to uplift them as well because they went into overdrive this year. Many of our families who have never needed before, needed this year. And so the collaboration that we had with them, they just stepped it up to make sure that every mouth was fed. And our staff in everything that you see here, our OFI staff, we are outreach and we're connecting and we're making sure that our families are having access to these resources. One of our partners, that's just been absolutely amazing, had quite a beginning. And Duffy Ross is here with us and she is definitely my partner in crime, who have been doing this work. And she's going to take this on. Duffy? I don't see her. Not sure what's happened.
I'm sorry, Ms. Caligari. Who did you say is presenting with you?
Duffy Ross.
She's, she's, she's got her hand up.
Ah, she should have had a panelist link. I'm so sorry, Duffy.
She can be promoted to panels.
Fantastic. Thank you.
I mean, it's easy for me to say, but I think Ms. Charles can do that.
You're right.
But before Duffy comes on, I just want to say this. The conversations that we had in my office when I first met Duffy has just changed the way that we do the work that we do with Burke Schools Fund. And I'm just really excited to have her as a partner.
Hey, there's Duffy. All right. Welcome. Thank you to Anne for giving me the honor of co-presenting and good evening to the board and superintendent. Really, this is a story, a story that starts maybe beautifully and appropriately with a friendship of all things. Anne and I work in different organizations, me with the Schools Fund and she with the district. We, our offices happen to be across the hall from each other. And really forged out of early conversations around equity and just a lot of residents there. We stumbled into an unlikely partnership. This was last year, pre-pandemic, where we decided to take that commitment to equity and try something new with the Berkeley Schools Volunteers Program. Anne graced me with her above and beyond time after a busy workday and we would sit and co-develop, co-design an equity training that we did for 200 volunteers over 10 different trainings across the year. And really became quite a facilitation team. We were in that place doing that work when the pandemic hit and had really built a really a solid foundation of trust and working relationship. And it made perfect sense that at that time, when the pandemic hit, that we would bring our teams together. Obviously, as Anne has already shared, the first order of business was emergency cash assistance. And it was so easy for us to move beyond the urgency and figure out systems with our teams, our incredibly capable teams, such that we have quick, easy referrals. The, the requests come in, they go through our system, the checks get cut. It happens almost instantaneously, thanks to the dedication of both of our teams. Another system that we created that endures and honestly will endure well beyond the pandemic is our team of volunteer task runners. We have over 200 on the rosters, about 85 of them led by our volunteer Sally McLaughlin. And she dispatches. So what happens is when there is a need for a family to receive a Chromebook or a hotspot or school supplies or books or food or groceries, the OFI rep will submit a referral. It goes straight to Sally. Sally sits at her computer. She puts out a call to one of, to all of the volunteers. They quickly respond. They hop in their car and most of those task runs are completed within 24 hours. This has been going on all year. It, it is running itself and it's, it's not running itself. It's powered. It's fueled by the commitment of our OFI staff and the dedication of our volunteers. I also wanted to acknowledge that with two partnerships, there's integration that happens. So now, every few weeks, our whole team drops into the OFI department meetings. We have gotten to know each other all by name. We have several orders of business that we can discuss face-to-face, meaning Zoom to Zoom, to really bring our, our communities together as true partners. And the last thing I wanted to mention, which is more forward-thinking, is that, you know, this year, the Schools Fund has partnered with the district around the Ed Hub, this distribution facility that's been fueled by volunteers and has been the out, the output place of all of these supplies needed for distance learning. Well, Anne and I have had many conversations about where, you know, the OFI department could grow towards. And one of those things is dreams of a really well-resourced family resource center that might have, you know, a computer station for families and it would have all of the supplies that the Ed Hub has right now. It may be a community meeting space. And we are, we keep talking about that vision and it's something that the Schools Fund is really eager to support. And so with, the more we talk about it, the more we can manifest it. So I look forward to that happening, hopefully in the near future. So thank you to Anne for her leadership, for her friendship and for the opportunity to bring together our organizations to really serve.
Thank you so much, Duffy. I really appreciate it. I also appreciate your hard work. Couldn't have happened without you. I'd like to continue with, with just talking about the fact that I talked about our partners, our outside partners that we work with. But just know that we are also working with our internal partners and that, you know, a lot of what goes on, it does not necessarily land in family engagement, but we are a support system to those departments that do the work. And so for our Ed Services Department, the K to college collaborations are things like the district-wide seminars, the Oratorical Fest, the, the Learning Circles and African American Success Framework, which lies in that department. I was able to support this by responding to the call from our superintendent. When he first came here and saw the data for African American students, saw that there was a great need. There was a lot of data that said what was not happening, but there was no teeth behind it. What, where were the support systems in place that really, and the funding that was put towards making that difference. And so he asked me, we talked about an African American success framework and asked me if I knew of organizations to support that. And so I helped with navigating the relationship with RT Fisher Educational Enterprises. And they are now here doing some amazing work. And to the board, I'm really looking forward to, are making that presentation to you because the teams have come together and have done an amazing job and to put together something that I believe is sustainable and is already, and, and there's already action taking place in terms of the STEM step programs. And I'm not going to give it away, but interventions that I wrote there. Our admissions department, we are helping our families, especially now with, you know, everything being, so much being done virtually. My team is helping our families with registration from elementary to middle and middle to high school. And there are just many families that struggle with navigating these systems. And this is one of the areas that I'm really excited about when we're talking about an Ed Hub. Because I've seen models where we, we have spaces where we're truly able to support these families. So that it's not so painstaking. Our fan, I wish we had the time for my staff to talk to you to let you know just how much it takes to be able to do and how much time it takes to do some of this work. And last but not least, I just want to point out, I've already pointed out the Hope Program, but also that the Office of Civil Rights, we're looking forward to doing equity trainings with this office. The Emotua Project, we work closely with the Nutrition Services, making sure our families had food, school lunches during the pandemic. That was quite interesting. And also our Special Education Department, where we support families, especially those with IEPs, with understanding their IEPs. And also, we sit in IEPs and support those families as well. And so I just returned to say once again, thank you to all of our partners that you see right here. We appreciate you. And if you are watching, just know that we appreciate the partnership because without you, we could not do all the things that we've been able to do for our families. So, you know, what are the next steps? Last year, we set goals for this, what was to happen this year. And as I've said before, this year was thrown on its side. However, we still continued with making progress. We talked about a new student information system and which is now being implemented. And I think Dr. Stevens may want to talk more about that. But also for our current state, when it comes to data collected, the data we've collected had to do with our program attendance this year. And we really, and you notice all of the information that I shared with you in terms of, you know, how many families were able to reach, how many were able to support it, how many attended the spaces. But we also are looking forward to, and I will show you on the next slide, you know, in terms of our vision for data collection for our office, which we hope will be a department. Also, we just talked about exploring the Ed Hub idea and that's quite real. That's an ongoing discussion. Thank you to Burke Public Schools Fund for being able to do something, even though it's a temporary space. It's a solid temporary space that served our families well. And we do have our one family engagement specialist at Longfellow. And Federico Aquino, doing an amazing job there, has met and communicated with and supported so many families at Longfellow already. And we're looking forward to being able to, to support more of our middle schools as well. So OFI's vision for 2020, a lot of this came up in public comment today already. Our vision for 2021, 2022 is that families are empowered to assume their role as co-creators. And so what we were thinking of is, you know, imagine the learning circles, because there were learning circles, like I said first, but for Latinx, our API families, K through 12. We, we only did K-8 for our Black Parent Principal Learning Circles. We're really looking forward to extending that to the high school that's asking for it as well and to BTA. We are looking at the development of success frameworks for all of our affinity groups. We, like I said, we are in the process of developing African American success framework for African American students. But definitely, we are looking at for all of our fitted groups, wherever there's need in our district. That's where our district needs to focus. But I just want to caution us though sometimes because when it has to do with families, everyone thinks family engagement and it does include family engagement. But just know that there's an entire district around family engagement and that there may be different departments responsible for the different things that are taking place. So I think we really need to talk about and look holistically about how do we make sure that all of our students, and if it is by affinity groups, how do we make sure that all are served? And that we are not competing or comparing, but that we're adding value for all of our groups, for all of our students. Also, our vision is to implement recommendations from, from the African American success framework. There is a history that we have of doing great things and then it stops. And when we have something that is great, what I'd like for us to do is to make sure that's implemented. This is one of the greatest fears that our parents, one of many of our parents expressed for the African American success framework. And, and they did so at our parent principal learning circles. Their fear is that when we shared it with them, is that we would have something really beautiful, but would not implement it. So this is our vision, that it would be implemented. And the development of metrics and data entry points to measure OFI's success and effectiveness is really huge. It's what we want also. But we also need to make sure that our department is able to partner with our data department, with the OFI department, data department. Needs to partner, we need to have the support of our departments to be able to do this work. And last but not least, that our students, families and school leaders are co-leaders in schools. This is what our parents are asking for. They want to be co-leaders, co-directors. They want to be partners in educating their children. And I have one slide. Actually, I had a video I wanted to play for you that I missed at the very beginning. And I'm wondering if you would humor me to go back. It's just a 10-second video to do that. Thank you. And I'm hoping that I'm able to do it. Are you able to see the video?
Yep.
Hola. Lo que yo más quiero para mis hijos es que tengan una experiencia de que se dura su jornada desde la primaria a la preparatoria. I want my children to thrive in our schools, not just survive. I want them to feel seen, celebrated for who they are and all they bring to the classroom, their culture, language, live experience. As children of immigrant parents, I want my children to feel that who they are is worthy of celebration and not seen as a barrier or hindrance. I want this for my children and for all children in our schools. Thank you.
This is the voice of our parents. Thank you so much for allowing me to share that with you because this is why we're here. It is for our students and for our parents and their desires are our desires. And what our parent just shared with us just now is what we heard at our affinity town halls from our African American parents. We heard it at our Latinx Town Hall, from Latinx parents, Spanish-speaking Town Hall. We heard it from our learning circles. We've heard it from our parents that they want and they want their children to not be othered in our district. And that's what we as OFI want as well. One final slide for Dr. Stevens.
Yep, I might jump in here. Thank you very much, Ms. Caligari. I'm going to call you Anne. We, it's been quite a year and we've had so many Zoom conversations and phone calls about the work that, that OFI is doing. I want to sort of take a moment just to acknowledge your personal contributions to all of this work. And these are things that perhaps you wouldn't mention out of modesty. So for the last two years, you've been a member of the superintendent's cabinet. And your presence there makes a difference for the entire district. You've been a consistent sort of mouthpiece for our families, making sure that cabinet-level decisions take into account the needs of all of our families and particularly families of color. And for that, I want to acknowledge the, the contribution above and beyond everything else that, that you have done. And then just to note, because Ms. Caligari would not mention it, many of the aspects of the work that she is presenting here tonight is truly a labor of love. Goes well beyond the job description that defines her work, that defines the, the sort of function of OFI. I do know that she has stepped up over and over again over the course of this year to put together parent education seminars, to create to put together parent education seminars, to creatively think about the partnership with the schools fund. Um, and these were acts of service and love, um, and I know them to be exactly that. So I just, it feels very important in public just to acknowledge um all of that commitment that you've shown. Again, the tenacity and the willingness to just work through what I know has been long months of exhaustion. So thank you for that. We've heard many times from our community a desire to continue the work of the Ophi team, and in fact, to expand that team. Um, and I, um, you know, am a strong proponent of that viewpoint. There can be no schools without strong relationships with all of our families. Uh, and particularly without an um a department that is really oriented towards serving families who are chronically underserved in so many schools, including our own. Uh, we know that we have many weeks ahead of us to sort of think through difficult decisions about the budget. Um, but I can articulate my desire through the course of this budget season um to explore the expansion of the liaison position to all of our campuses um as well to think about building on the creative work that Ms. Caligari and her team have done this year to expand family education and potentially to create a dedicated family education position. So that that role is more steady, more sustainable, uh, and not simply an act of pretty exceptional volunteerism. Uh, and then finally, to think um with Ms. Caligari, with the board and others about the kind of leadership uh and particular leadership support that can help the office into its next stage of of evolution. So I do look forward to coming conversations about the budget where you'll see these priorities reemerge, I hope. Um, I know that we're in difficult budget times, um, and and I know that's a little counterintuitive, but but we're gonna, we have some difficult decisions in front of us, but please do know that from me as the superintendent, this is a very strong commitment uh that we honor the work that our team has done and attempt to build on it. So Ms. Caligari, thank you again, and thanks for the great presentation this evening.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. And um, do you mind unsharing your screen? That way we can some, someone might ask you to reshare it, but this way we can all see each other. Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, that was a lot. Um, let me, let me turn it over to my colleagues for comments or questions on on that presentation. Vice President Brown.
Thank you. I'm President Alper. Thank you so much for that incredible um presentation, Ms. Anne, and thank you um for starting. I'm gonna take some time here, like the superintendent did, but thank you for starting by highlighting incredible, meaningful work um of your staff. And oftentimes, we don't get a chance to hear about the work that um the staff is doing all the time. And so it was so important to hear that data point, especially from the voice of parents um who who um are appreciative of their work and who um benefit benefit the support that they offer and do like the the video said, help students to thrive and not just survive in our schools. Um, thank you for the, all the additional work that you did this year. Thank you for listening to our families partnering with the city, generating resources and for the many wellness checks um that were conducted this year. Your your office has really been the heartbeat um of our district. And so um you deserve all of the appreciations that you're gonna get um this evening. But thank you um so much for that and for reminding us of, reminding us that it is the responsibility of the entire district to support families and engage with them effectively and not just the role um of Ophi. My question, finally, after all the appreciation, um, my question is about uh partnerships. And I was incredibly happy to hear about those strong partnerships that you've been able to develop and was wondering if you uh wouldn't mind sharing if there are any plans to expand those partnerships or continue those partnerships um into the future next full year.
Um, I, I'm, the partnerships that we have have expanded greatly uh from last year, the year before, and uh, let's say the year prior to last year to now. Um, and I'm just really excited about um the possibility of adding new partnerships to be able to bring in the resources that we need um to um support our families. Um, I am um going to be meeting with Latinos Unidos in the next week. Um, and this is an organization that I um actually united in action, uh, which was um P-CAD, Parents, Children of African Ascend and Latinos Unidos. I was a part of that joint um organization that really helped to put some of our school board members on this board. Um, and so it's really nice to circle back and to connect because we truly need to have that partnerships and other partnerships that will bring the supports for um or Latinx and our API uh students and all um students um that need uh the support in our district, but these are the largest groups in our district. So yes, I do.
Thank you. And I'd like to ask another question or make a comment. Director Vassadov and then Director Babat.
Hi, uh, thanks, Anne, for your presentation, and I I agree, the parent testimonial was really strong. And I, you know, I go appreciation for Ophi, especially right now when we know that it is our black and brown families who have been most disproportionately impacted by the, by COVID-19, by this pandemic. And so your work is so integral to helping us heal out, you know, out of this pandemic, to get out of it. And it's here for the long haul, right? Like, we know that the impacts of this pandemic will be felt for a long time. We're being asked to do things that we've never had to do before in the public health realm, and so your office is key. So so thank you for that. My question is around uh wellness checks, and I have a couple of questions, so bear with me. One is, um, do you know how many wellness checks were conducted in Spanish this year by your office? Do you have that data?
No, um, actually, I don't have that data. Uh, what I do know is that when we did collect, uh, when we did do the wellness checks for our um English-speaking um staff at the site, they partnered with our Spanish-speaking staff to be able to uh support our families. So I I cannot tell you, the only thing I can tell you, though, is that the majority of um the funds, and I I don't know if we want to really collect that data, but the funds that we have given out um have been, the majority have been to our Latinx um families. Um, a lot of the support that we have given um uh when it comes to um housing, um, helping um with um filling out paperwork for um the um enrollment uh and registration in our schools. Um, we've, we've helped a lot of our Latinx families and Spanish-speaking families. Um, so no, I don't have the data, just like I really do not. You know, we collected the data, and you notice I said more than 2,500. It is way more than 2,500. I just wanted to be conservative in the number that I provided for you. So the answer is no. Uh, but one thing that I really am excited about is um our new data system, because I think that we really need to think of a way with our data system so that our staff, as they are serving families, can easily access the information. And they don't have to say that it's a Latinx family. They can just input the data or the, or fill a survey that automatically goes off once we finish serving our families. And when that survey comes back to us, it will automatically tell us who it is. And that that data can automatically be calculated to tell us that this is how many we serve. This is how many were Spanish-speaking. This is how many were Arabic-speaking. That's the excitement that I have, and those are the conversations that I am having. Because it is hard enough doing the work, but having to figure out how to do the data part also, it's not in our wheelhouse. That should be done for us.
Well, I'm happy to work with you on that, because I I work in this field, and I know that departments like the Department of the Environment in San Francisco, their staff has laptops, so when they go out and serve SFUSD families, it's very easy if you have a, you know, or they sometimes use an iPad that's more portable to collect this that, this data and survey families. So I'm happy to to work with you on that. My other question is, you said that you had data that showed you that African-American families could benefit most from healing circles. But did you ever, um, you know, ask Latinx families if they could benefit from healing circles? Because it seems like, and correct me if I'm wrong, that from the parent engagements and seminars that that were in your slideshow and the principal learning circles, and none of them actually took place in Spanish, correct? There were, there were a couple that were translated, but were they in Spanish? Were any of them hosted in Spanish?
I don't know what you're referring to. Healing circles?
The principal learning circles?
Oh, 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 no, no, no. So the parent principal learning circles. Um, so the way the parent principal learning circles work is that we are doing it for an identified group of families. So we are working with our African-American families. And so it is not translated, because we um connected with the schools and we asked our schools and the Ophi staff to identify African-American parents who will be partnering with the school leaders uh in these series of meetings. And what I'm saying is that in our vision, let's imagine that we are doing this for Latinx families next. And that we, we are not going to be reaching out to African-American families when we're doing this. It's an affinity-based group. Because what we're trying to do is develop the partnership between this group of families with their unique needs and our leaders at the school.
It sounds like you're saying you're going to expand this work to Latinx families for the future.
That's what the vision is exactly.
And then my last um question for you is that I know that there are, if you heard the comments from Latinos and Niels, and I'm really excited that you're gonna come to these meetings that happen monthly with the superintendent. They've been happening since November, and I would really welcome you to attend these meetings. I think it's it's important for you to hear directly from the community. But you know, one of the things that the community has been asking for, and I know that Ophi's staff has played a key role in organizing El Club de Padres. I see Tito there at Longfellow, right? But how do we take these pilots and really scale them? How do we do this in a very thoughtful way? And I actually, you know, I reviewed the previous board meeting where you presented. It was in in December, and I listened to the comments from from the former board, and they said, "We really want a coherent approach towards family engagement," and I, and I agree with that statement. You know, I think it would be great to take some of the these pilots that Tito and Laura have done and do them district-wide. Like, El Club de Padres should be a district-wide resource, right? And I think that that should definitely be part of that vision, right? I think wide celebrations too, like it's been two years since we've celebrated something for Dodore Huerta and Cesar Chavez, and I'm really pleased that we had an Oratorical Fest that was virtual. But I think we could have done that too, right? I think two years is is a long time for the community to wait. So I would love to, you know, make sure that we are honoring what we've said in our resolutions and celebrating our annual events with our with our Latinx community. I realize that 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 is shared work, but this is the Office of Family Engagement and Equity, right? And as our AAPI families are starting to form and coalesce, our Latinx families, we heard from them today. I think we need to be thoughtful and honor the comments of the previous board too, to be coherent in our approach to how we serve our different affinity groups in BUSD. Thank you.
I totally agree with you, and I say to you and to all of our board members and everyone who's listening, totally and completely support the expansion of the Office of Family Engagement and Equity, because we can do just so much. And the wheels that are turning, that were turning before the pandemic, are the wheels that continue to to turn. And the the activities that we did, we did are those that were totally supported by Ophi, but also were already supported by other organizations. So what I want to say to you and to all of you here that one family engagement person at one site can really help with developing the relationships that can do what is being done with that one family engagement at um Longfellow, where we have Club de Padres. Additionally, I say to you, this is an office. My role is a supervisor. And I want to, you know, and I I've said this before, I would absolutely love to do everything. But if you'll notice what the superintendent said, a lot of what I've done has been a labor of love. And what that means is above and beyond. My role is to supervise a staff at the locations. Position this department so that it can build, create and develop and supervise, and then hold us accountable for all of it. The department from its initiation from the very beginning was not set up to succeed based on how it was staffed. Now, you've set it up to succeed, and you put our feet to the fire. Until then, I ask for your grace as we are doing so much for this district.
Thank you, Ms. Caligari. Director Babat?
Thank you, thank you for that, because um as a parent who has benefited greatly from the Office of Family Engagement and Equity over the years, I've actually fought to have it to be what it even is today uh through the Parent Advisory Committee and through our LCAP plan, and then had to fight to save it year after year. And had it been cut, where would we have been during that pandemic? Where would we have been when we needed training as a parent? Because I've been on both sides of this thing. As a parent who had no idea about Google Classroom, yet I had to learn these things. And I had to go to those seminars. So grateful to hear it in English and Spanish, so that everybody could be trained. What is distance learning? What is the emotional support that I need to provide? That was with my fifth grader, but let's go all the way back to my high schooler who, uh, parent and family engagement, a family engagement officer took me to my first board meeting. Said, "Just come on and go. Just sit there. You don't have to say a word." I would not be a director right now if somebody didn't push me to even attend a school board meeting. I would, I have been empowered to serve my uh now senior, who was on her way to UC Davis, if it wasn't for the parent empowerment workshops that I attended, because I had a full-time family engagement officer at Rosa Parks Elementary School. I had a full-time family engagement officer at Berkeley High School. I was fortunate. And I pushed so that every school could have that. And what we ended up having was a part-time 50/50. And so since I'm still at Rosa Parks, I've been able to see the difference when the person is there full-time, pushing, 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 still doing, doing, doing. Rosa Parks would not be where it was today if we didn't start with that foundation of a full-time. And if we didn't have Tito to bring it through, even as a halftime in parent power that was already ready to carry that other 50%. So I am very glad that we are having this discussion about expanding it, about uh, I'm very grateful for the vision that you have implemented, for the partnerships that have been created, uh, for the city work, for the Berkeley Public Schools Funds work. I'm telling you, our black and brown families are all the better for all of you. And you know, I've had the privilege of like, even when um a family engagement officer wasn't at my school, they would reach out and help me. Like, I could reach out to any of them and get the advice that I needed, to get the support that I needed. And I remember going to Longfellow Middle School and feeling like, what am I gonna do now without that family engagement officer? I even asked myself during distance learning, how am I gonna know my baby's all right if Tito's not there to tell me what's happening? And then I had to realize, oh, wait, I'm here. She's in my house. It's gonna be okay. But that's how, uh, that's how much we rely as parents on those relationships, on that support, on helping us navigate the BUSD system. I mean, I've had to have go through the complaint process, and I've had to have people walk me through those things and get my, my daughter transferred out of a classroom and then follow up with the principal to make sure that the other black and brown kids in that classroom continue to be safe. And he did his job, and we actually ended up getting our teacher out of our school. So it is very important to continue this work. Thank you for um all that you've done. Thank you for the huge labor of love. Uh, thank you for all the sacrifices, uh, because we know that with over the 248 parents who signed that petition for all the letters that we've been getting from uh the various parents and families and school site administrators and teachers and educators, that we are all the better because of your work and uh the the labor of love by your entire department. And thank you.
Thank you, Director Babat. Director Sina?
Well, that's a hard act to follow. So, um, Ms. Caligari, I also want to express my appreciation for the Yeoman's effort that Ophi has done during this pandemic. I mean, you guys did phenomenal work before. If we didn't have Ophi there uh during this crisis, you know, I don't know what would have happened. I know I I partnered with you guys and, you know, Erin at the Berkeley Public Schools Fund when we were dealing with the housing issue over the summer of trying to get people from hotels into housing, and you guys were right there supporting the families in serious crisis. So um I appreciate all of the work that you guys have been doing and the partnership with the Berkeley Public Schools Fund and the Berkeley School Volunteers stuff. It has just been phenomenal. Um, I think our community is so lucky to have a community, a education foundation that stepped up in the way that you guys did, that I don't think any education foundation across the state stepped up like you guys did. You totally shifted and pivoted what you do to serve our kids directly, and uh, thank you so much for that. Anne, I I am gonna go back. I have one question. And I, I am gonna go back, I have one question and I'm gonna go back to what I, I did talk about a couple of years ago. When we were talking about needing to save the program and really, um, wanting to hang on this issue of kind of goals and metrics. And looking at best practice and not just like, how do we come up with them like plucked out of the air? But with the models of family engagement that are evidence-based across the country. How can we come up with metrics that are, are really, um, things we can measure? And hold legitimately accountable to, because you're doing so much on many levels. We can't attribute success to any one thing, but how do we come up with those metrics? And I think you're right, a lot of us aren't experts in coming up with those metrics, but I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. I think there's a lot of model programs that might be able to help us with that. And I think if we're looking at potentially doubling the budget to, I don't know, I, it's like one point four million. Or, you know, adding the extra seven hundred, we have to have some metrics. I'm gonna, I, I have hung my hat on, um, Dr. Reinhardt's comment at the last board meeting. That, you know, you can't go to scale, you can't measure success if you don't have data. So I agree, you know, how our, our Brea Office or how our experts in the community of family engagement. Can help us come up with those. Dr. Stevens, I think, you know, we can't go another year saying we have to come up with metrics. Um, cause there's too much money at stake and we need to know that our families are actually. I mean, two things come to my mind when I hear the presentation. There's outcomes for students that are getting direct case management and support. And then there's culture change in the district. Both those things need to be measured in some way. So like the learning community sounds phenomenal. I wanna know how it's gonna manifest in culture change in those schools where this is happening. And hold our principals accountable to the learning that they received in this great dynamic. Cause the parents move on, well, staff move on too. But you know, our parents matriculate through and the culture is what's gotta change. So I'm, I'm really eager to hear and be part of the dialogue around, you know, thinking about those metrics. And you don't need to answer that stuff now. I mean, we've talked about it before. I think we need to highlight it now. The one question I have though now is, how do you guys get referrals for your students? In the sense of like how, you know, in the sense of the over, and this is the other thing, my, my, you know, my, my mantra. Is, you know, we've got our unhoused families, our students in hope, we've got our RTI, we've got our, um. You know, our prioritized students. So with the tracking or maybe it goes back to the data question. Is, um, how are we making sure that the students that are falling into our priority categories? Um, are getting, are getting really heightened services that they need. So where are the referrals coming from?
Uh, when you're talking about referrals, you're talking about us being able to identify the, um, students with needs so that we can engage their families? Yes. Um, so there are many ways that that takes place. One of which is that our staff is a part of our cost teams at all of the school sites. Um, they are engaged with, uh, actually they monitor, uh, the attendance of course. Because that's another way that we find out that there are needs. Um, but also we outreach on a regular basis, um, to our families that we know have ongoing needs. Um, and we are able to sometimes identify that they are homeless because they didn't realize that, you know, they doubled up, so they need to be housed. So we do outreach to families, uh, on a consistent basis to do check-ins. But the most, uh, consistent way of finding out that their families have great needs. Is through the work that we do at the school sites with the teachers, with the administrators. And that's with the cost teams and monitoring, um, monitoring attendance.
So when we get, I can't remember what the name of the data, the new system we're talking about.
Uh, um, the student information system, the, uh, internet.
Pardon?
Infinite Campus.
Yeah, yeah, is that what it is? Okay, infinite, yeah, infinite campus. Will that help us identify like our, is the OFI office meeting? I, I mean, I actually do think, you know, with, with the money and the grants and things that are going out, we do wanna track aggregate, not by name. But aggregate data of how many of our families that were, you know, prioritized students or unhoused. Were receiving, were receiving the grants from Berkeley Public Schools Fund is. I mean, I do think we need to know that the students who we've prioritized in one area. Are getting the support and the resources and then who else is getting stuff is, is important to have.
Yeah, that information actually have all that name, all the names and information for, for the students and families that receives funds, for example. Um, and my thing is, how, how can we drop that data into our information system to be able to provide? Um, you know, to disaggregate that data for you so that we know for sure that the families with the highest needs. Um, did, you know, that we are giving them the support that they need.
Thank you for your doing.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Director Ross, you have a, give it to you for the, the last word. And I just wanna remind everybody we have three more items tonight. It's already almost ten o'clock.
Right. Thank you, President Alper. I'll be brief. I just wanna echo what my colleague Director Sinei said. I would be happy to support with, you know, coming up with an idea of evaluation and metrics. I think that's really important. Um, a menu of services would help with that, making a consistent menu so that at every site, when you say what are OFI services, bram, bram, bram. The menu is very clear. This is what OFI services are at every site, right? And I think that we need to see like, if we're talking about an expansion, what does the menu of services look like at the elementary school level? At the middle school level and what is the menu at the high school level? Because their needs are going to be different, right? So I'd love to partner with you and, and support you with that work, um, and, and with Director Sinei too. I also wanna say, you know, it shouldn't take an expansion to do a parent education seminar in Spanish district wide. We have the staff, we have the passion, right? Like we have Carol, we have Tito, we have Laura, who I know would love to do this work. And so expansion or not, I would love to see a parent education seminar in Spanish. I would like us to uplift our Latino community at least once a year with a district-wide celebration. It could be for Latino Heritage Month too. Be happy to partner with you, Anne, on making that vision, you know, come to light. And I know you have the staff to do it that brings a lot of passion. And I think it is really important to have consistent services in Spanish for Latino families district wide. Because it, they're not just at Mendez, they're not just at Longfellow, that are, they are at all of our schools, right? That's twenty percent of our district. And so eso servicio district wide, I'd love to partner with you on that menu. And I think we can do it, expansion or not, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm willing to step up to the plate and to support you. Thank you. You're on mute.
As an Alper, you're muted.
Um, thank you. Um, Ms. Caligari, thank you so much. Ms. Ross, I wanted to thank you too for being here with us. We really appreciate, um, of course, OFI, but, but also the Berkeley Public Schools Fund who we've honored very recently. But continue to honor every day for your work with OFI, um, and with, um, so many of our families. So thank you both for this great presentation and, and to my colleagues and Dr. Stevens for the discussion. And we will move on. Thanks so much. And we do, we do have, we do have several more things. Um, so. We'll move right along to item twelve point three, which is our, our last discussion item. Budget update and discussion of priorities. Doctor Stevens.
Great, thank you very much, President Alper. Um, uh, I'm gonna be turning this over to Assistant Superintendent Pauline Follinsby. Um, we were just texting, she's gonna try to turn up the beats per minute so that we, a little bit faster through this presentation. So over to you, Pauline. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. And you're gonna share your, your screen, Doctor Stevens?
Um, on its way.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Follinsby.
Sure. Trying to get back to my Zoom. Okay, here we go. Um, so good evening, everyone. Um, I'll be going through a very brief, um, presentation. Um, looking at, um, some new assumptions for our budget. So, um, so on the next slide, the outcomes, um, just looking at the revised, um, enrollment projections. And multi-year projections and, um, COVID funds. Um, there's a quick update on COVID funds. And we'll be looking at additional need-based requests for COVID funds in a separate presentation. It's actually an action item which will be following my presentation. So on the next slide, um, we had, we have received information on our CAIPAC's projections. And we're now, um, reviewing or, or considering a four point five percent decline. Um, it's a less conservative approach. Um, when we get the additional enrollment projections, May sixteenth. As well as the governors, um, may revise. Um, we will be, um, um, bringing back revised projections. Um, so on the next slide, we can go to the next slide, so. So, um, with the reduction of, um, of four point five percent. I, I showed this year's assumptions as well as the out years. So enrollment, um, the drop, um, from twenty twenty-one is actually the four point five percent is reflected here. And we're showing an enrollment projection of ninety-four oh one. And then if we look at the, um, at the ADA, projected ADA, um, the drop is actually nine thousand and two. Uh, but we're still funded at the prior year for twenty twenty-one and at the nine thousand and two level for twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, on the next slide, um, this, this actually looks at the, um, the multi-year projections. We can see that the, um, the revenue, um, is, is improved for twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four. And on the following slides, um, the, we can go to the next slide, we're running through this. Um, no, no changes in our, um, expenditures, but what this does to our projections for budget reductions. It's now, um, we're now looking at six million dollars, five million ongoing before we're looking at nine million dollars for the cliff. So this is somewhat better, um, not ideal, but, um, we're trending, um, in the right direction, if you will. Five million dollars ongoing and a one million dollar one-time reduction and this balances our budget. Um, the next slide summarizes, um, the overall changes. So you can see what we, um, our assumptions for the four point five percent decline versus the seven point five percent decline. For years twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four. Our ADA, um, we're projecting an increase of two hundred and thirty-six in our ADA. What does that do to our revenue? We're actually looking at an additional two point two million dollars in twenty-two, twenty-three and in twenty-three, twenty-four. So that's the essence of the presentation there. Um, we can go on to the next slide. Um, and this is just a very quick overview of some of the newer, um, funding that has come in, um, COVID funding. We are now looking at SO three funding and our AB eighty-six funding. Um, this is an excellent, um, presentation of when our funding actually expires. So the SO three is the last row and you can see that actually takes us out to twenty, to twenty twenty-four. And on the next slide, um, this is again an excellent summary. I actually borrowed these slides from, um, Michelle Sinclair who presented it to the E and P. So we thought it was a good summary that we're sharing with the board just for information in terms of looking at the four funding pots. And, um, and briefly looking at, um, the, their uses as well. So the following slides, and we can go through them pretty quickly, um, Dr. Stevens. Um, just in terms of our SO funding, we have to remember that's our least restrictive funding. And, um, and how we actually get is allocated to us is based on our Title I funding. Um, we are focusing on the SO three for some, to, um, assist us with one-time budget. Um, budget, budgetary needs. Um, and the next slide, um, these are again just informational, um, or in-person instruction grant as part of the AB eighty-six funding. And, um, this lists the, um, allowable uses. And, um, it has to do with us offering in-person instruction, which we are in fact, um, complying with. Next slide. Um, our ELO is, um, is somewhat more restrictive. And we have been using these for, um, before and after school, um, learning opportunities for students. Um, and Michelle is focusing on this particular funding source. Um, what's interesting about this, um, particular funding source is that, um, ten percent has to be used to hire paraprofessionals. So we're looking at about six hundred thousand dollars that should be used for paraprofessionals. Next slide. This covers the allowable uses. Um, we do have to have a plan, um, adopted by the board by June one. So this has to be a more formal, formal approach to spending these funds. And next steps. So that's the end of the presentation. So again, we're gonna be focusing on data analysis, um, for identifying areas of improved equity. Um, we're also gonna be working with our PNO and our, on our various advisory committees. As we kinda, um, look at our chat, ask for our budget as well as our funding challenges. So, um, we will continue to work with our key partners and of course, we'll be continuing with the LCAP engagement process. So that was pretty quick and it's now time for discussion.
Thank, thank you, Assistant Superintendent Follinsby, um, for that brief update and the, um. Seems like the most significant part of it is the change in the projections related to the, to the enrollment. Or the enrollment cliff. Are there, um, so it's, it's helpful to have those updated, um, numbers that are a little bit more. Um, a little bit less conservative, but probably a little, little bit more accurate. Cause I think we were, we all agreed we were, they were sort of overly conservative, um, before. So that's, that's helpful. Questions? Comments? All right. I don't see any, so I'm gonna thank you, Assistant Superintendent Follinsby. And move on to our first action item, which is, um, request for approval of COVID relief fund expenses. Is that you, Doctor Stevens, or Assistant Superintendent Follinsby again?
Um, Doctor Stevens.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you get this, you get me for this one, sorry. Um, so, uh, uh, I thought Assistant Superintendent Follinsby's, um, presentation is good context for, um, this coming, uh, request for action by the board. Uh, when we were together two weeks ago, um, we brought to the board, um, three, um, proposals for using COVID funding that were a bit more time-sensitive. Um, we're bringing several more, uh, this evening as well that we think it'd be good to start acting on. Assistant Superintendent Follinsby did describe that we're planning on bringing a formal, uh, plan for the full expense of the COVID funds, uh, to the board at the beginning of June. So I'm, I'm going to move very quickly through some reference material and then get straight to the recommendations of staff to the board. Um, in previous conversations, we've, um, published these slides. This just describes for members of the public, the rough steps that we're following during this year's budget process. Uh, including enrollment and revenue assumptions, which you just heard. Thinking about collective bargaining obligations as we sort of work with bargaining, um, our labor partners to close contracts. Um, engaging in LCAP planning, including the review of data and the collection of feedback from community. I discussed that in some of my opening remarks. Working with our PNO to approve a variety of B seven, era of budgets. Uh, and then finally collecting feedback and designing the expense of our COVID funds to support students and families. And then last but not least, general and supplemental funds to, to come in about, uh, mid, mid-June. So we're bringing three ideas to the board, um, for this evening and I'll go through them very quickly. Again, these are a bit more time-sensitive, um, and we've like, are asking for board action on these three. Um, so the first is a plan for the replacement and refurbishment of technology. Uh, we have more than five thousand Chromebooks that we have lent out. In effect, we sort of, um, pirated all of these, um, Chromebooks from all of our in-class Chromebook carts. Uh, and so we'd like to be able to, uh, replace, um, all of the, through Chromebooks that we begin to collect back from families. Uh, and early estimates of that value about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we also propose to use fifty thousand dollars to be able to, um, pay additional time to staff over the summer to be able to refurbish and clean. Um, reusable Chromebooks, uh, and then finally to purchase, um, new Chromebooks as well. Um, and this particular, um, aspect of the, the, the small budget, uh, will permit us to, um, uh, continue in the way that we have. To close the digital divide to make sure that, um, students, whether they're not learning in distance learning or on campus, will have access to a Chromebook. So this is really more of a loner program, uh, much in the way that we've lent out five thousand, uh, Chromebooks this year. So this total ask is $550,000 all told. We're also asking for approval for the board to spend $180,000 in one-time expenses to be able to significantly bolster the team of folks who are working on triennial and initial special education assessment makeups. One of the very difficult aspects of the pandemic, especially in the early months, is that all in-person assessments came to a halt. This particular expenditure will let the district sort of regain its timeline with respect to both triennial, that's every three-year assessments, and then initial assessments for families who have requested them. And then finally, we described in an earlier presentation this evening that we're sort of planning to sort of pull out all the stops for our in-person graduation events. We will experience some increased costs beyond those already budgeted in the general fund for graduation expenses. I'm listing out those anticipated increased costs by level, including most significantly, the high school where we're prepping our own campus for an in-person event. And these include purchases that are not typical to graduation events, including pretty extensive facilities preparation, field protection, overnight security, renting stages and sound equipment, and then live streaming production as well, all coming from professional event management company. So this total ask is 167. And then we put together this summary slide. This reflects the board approvals from the April 24th meeting. Those are reflected in the light gray color, and you can see that those included the restorative restart school grant, the seven-period day for Longfellow, and the data integration specialist in Brea. And then the new requests this evening, the technology replacement at 550, special education at 180, and graduation costs at 167. So tonight's total requests are $897,000. This is working against a balance of $16 million. And with all of these board-approved expenses, assuming they're approved this evening, we draw down our COVID funding to a balance of $13 million, still very ample, and that lets us pursue many student support and family support activities for the coming years. And then just as Assistant Superintendent Fonsby described, we continue to engage with all of our advisory committees. We're in the process of a very rich and rewarding community engagement process right now that will lead to the finalization of the COVID spending plan. But we bring these limited set of asks to the board this evening so that we can get started on them. And with that, we're very happy to answer questions about any of those three items.
Great. Thank you. I'm just going to make a quick comment, and then I'll turn over to Director Babett. I, I appreciate all, all these requests. The technology one is one that I think I mentioned at a previous meeting, I feel like is a really great use of these funds and something that we're getting ahead of and ensuring that we don't let what we learned during this year go to waste and that we make sure that we have the technology in place for our families, even when we're, when we're back in school. Because we, you know, we rely on Google, Google Drive and Google Docs. And, you know, we can't anymore, you know, act as if doing homework on a phone or we're trying to access Google Docs on, you know, on, on a parent's cell phone is the same thing as having access to a real computer. And so whatever we need to do to replenish our supply of Chromebooks, I think is really money well spent. And the, the special ed makeup costs seem like an important expenditure, and I appreciate bringing it to us now so that we can get started on that. And then the graduation costs too, I just want to say, I, you know, it's, I, I, I think it's, these are important events for families who have been home most of the year. And I'm personally not, you know, the promotions at fifth grade and eighth grade are, haven't been something that, like personally, I've, you know, put that much stock in, but I really have heard from a lot of families about their desires to have, have a way to come together, particularly this year. And, and I know a lot of families really celebrate those, those milestones and that they're really important to the community. And of course, the high schools, of course, the high school. So I think, you know, it's understandable that it's going to cost more to do, to implement this sort of safety measures that we need to do this year, but is, is worth it for, for what we're being able to provide for the community that has not been able to be in person for so much of the year. So anyway, I, I just wanted to make those comments to appreciate these requests, and I will turn over to Director Babett and then Director Sinai.
Yeah, I'll be quick. I just wanted to make sure that the Chromebooks are going to include covers, like cases, because I know last year we just kind of gave them out, but we didn't necessarily put them in cases. So if that's an additional expense, we should really consider that because we had a lot of cracked screens come back, which could have been avoided. And then think of ways in which we can continue the live streaming for, you know, PTA meetings or school-side council meetings within, even when we return, some may want to be in person and some may still be able to, to log into and attend. It may be time for those kind of media rooms that we really establish in our schools. And then with the assessments for special education families, I just want to make sure that, do we need to put in more money so that that information actually translates over to the general education teachers? Because I think there's a lot of work sometimes that's done in the assessment phase, but we're not quite always sure how that got really communicated, read, and understood by the actual general education teacher. So if we need to think of that using these funds, because that's going to be really critical, like those one-on-one meetings with all the various teachers to make sure that they really understand and have the support that they need to implement the recommendations from those assessments. Fully fun, full inclusion.
Your excellent suggestions. We do have our executive.
They hashtag Director Babett.
That has a ring to it, though. Our Executive Director of Special Education, Sean Mansiger, is here. I'm, I'm sure that he's listening to these comments as well. We understand completely what you're talking about. That information about assessments is critical to get to general education teachers. Director Mansiger, I don't know if you'd like to jump in on this one, or if it's enough just to hear the, the, that very thoughtful comment.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the comment. I mean, it is, you know, I think, you know, just to put a little context to all this, you know, as Dr. Stevens said, you know, when we went into the pandemic back in March in 2020, it really threw us all for a loop. And as we know, like our set, our evaluations, assessments, they're, they're very standardized. And so moving into this virtual world really kind of threw us all, and we had to do some serious planning. So I'm very proud of our, our school psychologists, our AEP teams. We've completed 100 initials this year, 179 triennials, but we're, we're still trying to catch up, like all districts. And again, very proud of all of our teams and our families and appreciate the patience that our families, for those that we haven't been able to get the assessments done. But we normally don't do this, a bunch of assessments over the summer exactly for that reason. We don't have gen ed teachers at the table. So a lot of the work might be really collecting the data and, and interviewing families and the students, and then those IEPs may be held in the actual new school year in order to get a full AEP team there. But it is a, it's a great thought too, of how we can get some gen ed teachers at the table. Part of what we know is that it's been a really rough year for our educators, and we know that working over the summer might not be on the top of everyone's list. So we are requesting this funding. We have folks that want to do the work. We are still trying to get more people to do the work, but we're really hoping to get a lot of these assessments caught up so we can start fresh in the new year, get the services that needed, need, needed to our families and our students as soon as possible. So I appreciate that comment.
All right, Director Sinai.
Hi. Two quick questions. I support the expenditures and I appreciate the running tab and that we're really not, you know, like digging deep into the pot and, in, without having a bigger picture. I, I clearly see that these are kind of urgent, urgent, or immediate needs. When it comes to the Chromebooks, I have two questions. One, part of the digital divide is internet access. And whether Sonic, if we have any idea whether our students and families have been able to take advantage of the Sonic partnership? And whether or not, you know, as Director Babett talked about covers, you know, the idea of also adding hotspots into the purchase so that if the Chromebooks, so I'm understanding that the Chromebooks are also for student use to go home, like for homework and studies. I want to make sure that we're equally looking at the, the internet access issue. So you don't have to answer that now, but I'm curious about the Sonic uptake.
I do, I don't have specific numbers about families who have joined Sonic as a result of our partnership. I can ask about that and make sure that the board sees the, the actual enrollment numbers. Our Director of Technology, Max Isler, is here, just popped on as a panelist. So he's also listening in, both the comments by Director Babett about covers, but also about the hotspots. And Director Isler, I think that that is part of this integrated plan, you know, around, you know, sort of resolving the digital divide. It's both, it's both the Chromebook, but it's also internet access, is it not?
Yes, we do provide hotspots currently to families that need them. And we recently joined the Project 10 Million Grant Program, which allows us to provide those hotspots at a reduced rate without having to engage in a 12-month contract. So we do anticipate being able to utilize that program to provide hotspots moving forward. The hotspots themselves, under that Project 10 Million, do not require any purchase, the hotspots are provided for free. So we will only be liable for paying for the $15 a month service as needed.
Okay, great. So I assume that there's some sort of survey process or that we help to identify the needs of our families. So we can figure, I said, support the expenditure. So my other quick question around the graduations. We usually spend tens of thousands of dollars on the Berkeley High graduation, either at the Haas Pavilion more recently, or at the Greek. Is the $81,000 on top of what we normally budget?
Yes, it is, Director Sinai. So, so this represents the full expenditure of our typical graduation budget. And then that, that expense is on top of that typical budget.
So we're talking like over $100,000 for the Berkeley High graduations?
We are, yes. And rationale there is that we're, you know, setting up a sound equipment. We have to protect the field, so we have to lay decking over the majority of the field. Otherwise, we could destroy the astroturf. And then we have to pay overnight security. We're paying all of our staff. So a good portion of that just represents overtime for everybody who will, you saw the length of those days, who are going to be putting three 12-hour days. And so we've got to pay off, pay folks for the time as well.
Okay. And then my last question, which overlaps technology and graduations, is whether we've included in the cost of the graduations, the ability to livestream, where there might be a limited concept of the site. I think this might be mostly the middle in the elementary. But I, you know, we have 25 or so percent of our students are distance learning. Some of those are not going to want to come into a big group event. I mean, they don't want to come back to school for very legitimate reasons. Coming back to a, a big gathering is probably not on the top of their list of priorities. Recorded for a student is no experience of a graduation to basically watch other kids graduate and see their name pop up. If there's any way we can encourage live streaming and use some resources to do that, I would encourage us to do that.
Thanks for that comment. And we can, the only level that I understand right now that is contemplating recording is elementary schools, and we'll go back and revisit that.
Director Sinai, I've just got word from the Berkeley Public Schools Fund, Valerie Kratzser, that 144 families have signed up for the Sonic program. So that's the answer to that, and thank you, Ms. Kratzser, for providing that information.
Quick action. Thank you.
That's the Berkeley Public Schools Fund for you. Vice President Brown, I think you have the last word here.
This isn't a full question, but just to piggyback on what Director Sinai was saying about making a virtual graduation possible for our students at home. I know that Oakland Unified School District was able to do that and do live streaming with their families last year. And so would encourage the superintendent and staff to maybe reach out to our colleagues in Oakland and see how that was done specifically at Skyline High School.
Oh, and I know, for personal reasons, I know that the, they livestreamed the Brooklyn High Water Polo Game yesterday over Twitter. It seemed pretty, I mean, the quality wasn't perfect, but it worked. So maybe there's some easy ways to use social media. All right. So I need, so.
I'll move it.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Brown. Ms. Chires?
Student Director Miller?
Yes.
Director Vasudeva?
Yes.
Director Babett?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
I'm assuming she's running yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Well, now we're really moving right along. We have the, our final action item. And if you're here for public comment, for extended public comment, feel free to raise your hand. We'll get to you after this next item, which I'm assuming is what Director Colise is here for.
Yes. It is. Thank you. And I will try to be quick, but I do want to honor the work that's been done on this so far. I'm going to share my, if I can have the permission to share screen, Dr. Stevens. Great, thank you. We're going to talk tonight just briefly about workforce housing and also the developer selection, which is the recommendation that you'll have at the end of this. So very briefly, we just wanted to go through workforce housing and what's got us to this point in the project. This has been an effort that's been going on for many years. I believe 2016 is around when it kicked off. Be Home, an organization in Berkeley, helped to really work on this with the district. And Director Sinai has really been spearheading this from the board level to really see this through. So it's always important to think about the why and what's driving this. And right now, and what it has been, is really just about educator recruitment and retention. It's about the number of our staff, our educators, both certificated and classified alike, that are forced to live outside of Berkeley. They're faced with long commutes and, you know, they, they've moved multiple times during their tenure at Berkeley. So we were just looking for a way to actually promote the recruitment and retention by offering a BUSD workforce housing program. So in the last year, we've, or a year and a half, I would say, we've made a lot of progress on this, particularly the board has, has authorized us to work with the city. We've worked with the mayor and the city council's office. We've gotten support of Measure O. We've been able to, or city council has agreed to actually up the AMI to 120% to actually, so that we can work with more of our educators and actually offer them that housing. We've designed a process and we've considered BUSD opportunity sites. And we've been engaging in really just exploring financial partnerships. The original site recommendation started out as four. We've evaluated two and brought one to the board as a recommendation as part of the feasibility study. We've evaluated housing, capacity, costs, operating property and governance. We've talked about what that may need to look like and that we really need to learn more from the developers. And we've, we've defined the community process and what that needs to look like, a really rich, engaging process, and then prepared the RFP or an RFQP, rather, excuse me, for the development. The opportunity sites of the four were narrowed down to one, you may recall, which was the, the parking lot at the Berkeley Adult School at 1701 San Pablo. When that, when that recommendation was made and passed with the board, there were many, there were many factors that drove it. Some of the opportunities that you see listed on the left was what was discussed when the site was chosen. And some of the new opportunities of why to move this forward now is, one of the things that we saw from the RFQP is there's actually the possibility of retaining surface parking with no loss to BAS student parking. And then, most importantly, Berkeley City Council on April 20th approved the Notice of Funding application for $24.5 million, which is critical in order to support this program. which is critical in order to support this program. So the board approved the workforce housing site, as I mentioned, at the adult school. The reasons why are listed here. I won't read them all. But ultimately, out of all of the sites within the district, this proved to be the most viable site at this time. It also allows us to still manage this and operate it as a school site, as well as gives us the flexibility, should we ever need to change the use of that school site from the adult school to any other grade level. Not suggesting for all of our viewers that that's what that's currently being thought about, but it is something that we do want to keep on the table at all times. So the RFQP process that we went through, it had a very tight timeline. We released it in March and we had the interviews this past week, the week of April 23rd.
Did you, did you say what RFQP stood for?
I apologize. I did not. I'm sorry. It's Request for Qualifications and Proposals. On these types of projects, we don't go out necessarily just for a hard bid. It is based on best value. It's based on qualifications. And actually, that's what this here is about. On the right-hand side, and I'll go back to the left, but everyone was scored on the criteria items that you'll see on the right. Those criteria items were scored in both the reading of the Statement of Qualifications, which is the developer's response to the RFQP. And then it's also, they were scored during the interview process in the same manner, based on the questions that were written. The RFQP process as a whole, it had us bringing this to the board for action at the following board meeting, May 19th. Because we were able to get through the interviews and make the selections so quickly, we decided to move that up a little bit, just to allow the developer to begin their work, because they do need to be prepared to submit the application for Measure O funding. I believe it's June, if I remember correctly, June or July. And I think Julie can probably correct me, but actually, I think it might be July. So the selection process, as I mentioned, all of the SOQs, which was the responses to the RFQP's, these were rated for points in both the reading and the interview. The firms were interviewed and they were scored based on that criteria that I just shared with you. And we had a robust panel. We had 10 members on the panel who interviewed them and we had a real good sampling, I would say, of different stakeholders. We had district representation. Director Saidi joined us at the board level. We had two community members. We had a representative from the city of Berkeley, our labor partners, the administrator from the adult school, as well as a Be Home representative. So we really tried to capture everyone with potentially different lenses to look at each firm and evaluate each firm and decide accordingly to make a recommendation to the board. So the selection results, it was a unanimous decision, although all the firms were really strong. But we want to recommend to the board that we move forward with SAHA and ABOE communities as the developer. They have a proven track record of success. They're committed to collaborating and a rich engagement process. They understand the needs of the community as well as the district. They have technical and regional expertise. They have property management expertise. And their conceptual plan, their schedule, their pricing methodology all prove to be very strong. So this is an action item. So the next steps would be for the board to approve the SAHA ABOE communities as BUSD's workforce housing developer. With that, we ask that the board authorizes staff to negotiate the land lease and the terms of the agreement. The fruit of these negotiations will be subject to board approval. And then we will invite SAHA and ABOE to come in. I'm thinking the first, the first board meeting of June to do a short presentation to the board as to their next steps of what they're going to begin to work on. So with that, I will stop sharing and I will open up for any questions.
Thank you, Director Kalis. I know a lot of work on a tight timeframe because, because of the external deadlines and I really appreciate it. It's an exciting project. Director Saidi, I wanted to see if you had any, anything you wanted to add.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I really want to appreciate Executive Director Kalis for all the work that he did to review the RFQ/Ps. There's a heavy load of work going on right now with all of our schools. And to be able to, on top of that, review the, you know, review the proposals, score them, put together the panel, put together the questions, which were also participatory. People gave feedback. People who were on the panel gave feedback on the questions. And it was a really good debriefing session as well. I just want to add a couple of things. One of the community members was a direct neighbor of the Berkeley Adult School. But we wanted to make sure that we got people engaged in that area. That the panel, I said this at the very beginning, the panel for the RFP review is not the be-all and end-all community engagement strategy. SAHA and ABOE really had, I mean, both, the firms were really good. But SAHA and ABOE had a much deeper understanding and respect for community process. And were very interested in getting the community engagement on the, from the ground up in the design and the development of the building in that, you don't wait until after to then, you know, get approval kind of thing. So they had a lot of strategies that they talked about. They also had a very more attuned strategy around working with a committee that included our labor partners and our community partners. So kind of their whole strategy around community engagement was really responsive to, I think, our, as a district, commitment that we're not going at this alone, but that we really need to engage with our local, our local community. The other thing, SAHA and ABOE is a women-led organization, partnership. The panel was very diverse, representing, you know, different ethnicities and communities. So we also felt like the representation of that group was also responsive to the different needs of the community of our staff. So we were really excited. Overall, there were some follow-up questions that particularly our labor partners had. And I think John and a couple of them had a follow-up discussion with SAHA to kind of talk about some of those remaining issues. So I feel really solid and excited about the recommendation. And there's a lot of work still to do. But it's definitely kind of a jumping off point to actually realizing housing for our employees. And would love to make the motion if and when we get to that point.
Absolutely. And thank you. And that's really great to hear. So thank you, Director Saidi. Director Vassadab?
Yeah, thanks so much for all the hard work that has gone into this, just, you know, selecting a developer can be a lot. And I just wanted to ask, because the project is on a transit corridor, do you know of SAHA's experience building like bike parking or, you know, sustainability facilities on their different sites and developments?
Yeah, so they did demonstrate some, some experience with that through their Statement of Qualifications. And we did talk about that in our more informal interview, which followed the panel. We interviewed them, myself, Matt Meyer, one of the community members, and just really had some good candid conversation. And they understood the importance of that, and they do have some experience with that as well.
That's great. I understand from, just from speaking to the planning department, that this project would not have to comply to any like TDM requirements. But I think there's a good general sentiment.
Can you say what TDM means?
Transportation demand management kind of requirements to try to shift people to sustainable modes of transportation by eliminating a lot of parking spots where they're living and other things. But for this project, I'm wondering, like, they don't have to do it, but it's always nice to find developers that think that way, right? That think of, you know, making sure that as part of the design, there's a lot of, you know, bike parking, like electric car, like charging stations, these kind of things.
Yeah, so with this being a workforce housing project and the funding coming from a multitude of sources, as well as just being, it's going to be a very expensive project, but it's going to be really contained. The budget has to be constrained. So all the developers who presented are really looking at those TDM options to really minimize the number of cars that are in there, but at the same time, meet the needs of the staff who live there. So they are looking at all of those options.
Thank you.
What's your title? Vice President Brown?
You forgot my name already. Hi, John. Thank you so much for your presentation today. I just wanted to follow up on one data point that we were looking to have collected the last time you presented, that I didn't see presented tonight, or maybe I just didn't get a chance to hear. There was a question around the single and multifamily homes that we're going to, to be a part of the project. And you were going to come back to us with some data around, around those single and multifamily homes based off of the needs of our community. Is there an update that you could share tonight around that?
At this point, no, only, only because, and I know that is still on our radar to look at. But what was authorized was the single site. The conversation around the urban infill and the spreading out the housing was really a recommendation, as we understood it staff, to be about building a lot smaller amounts of units at multiple sites across the district. And that's going to take a lot more investigation. We understand that the board has the interest to review that. We just have to get there.
Thank you for recognizing that. I think it's just, you know, in the interest to support all of our families and the makeup of our families, or makeup of our staff that has families in BUSD. It's important and great to hear that you're looking into that.
So Vice President Brown? I think I might have, I think, I'm not sure I understood your question correctly. Are you talking about how many units at the site might be one-bedroom, two-bedroom, or three-bedroom? Or were you talking about the distributive model of housing all over the district?
No, I was talking about the specific site, but what I heard from Director Kalis.
So I think Director Kalis misunderstood your question.
I did. So I understood it as you were asking about single-family homes. So you were asking about.
Oh, God, no.
So, yes, so there has been a, in, in the proposals that were put forth, it did talk about unit mix. But the, all of the developers who interviewed, but including SAHA and ABOE, and they definitely spent some time talking about this, about the importance of actually redoing another survey, right, with our labor partners. And, you know, the fact that we have, we will have a developer on, you know, under contract at that point and working shows how realistic this really is. We're hoping to see more participation through that survey. And that survey will really help us better get, get a better gauge of what the unit mix needs to look like. I apologize. I completely misunderstood your question. So Director Saidi, thank you for clarifying that.
I think Director Saidi, thank you for clarifying the question, because I was just getting ready to say, well, actually. But thank you for that response. And thank you, Director Saidi.
The other aspect that our labor partners, particularly BFT, raised in the discussion, and again, all of this stuff is to be developed, is the fact that we've got up to 120% AMI. You know, we've got the ability to get a broader array of our teaching staff. And you might have a different, you know, some of them, including our classified staff, there might be needing a mix of more two-bedroom or three-bedroom. So that's the kind of stuff that will come out of survey. Now, the reality, the challenge will be, you know, the financing is based on how many units you can, you can build. So it becomes kind of a fine dance between making sure it can pencil out.
And will you just say what AMI is, Director Saidi?
Area Median Income.
Thank you. Okay. Great. Director Saidi, any other comments? No? If you'd like to, if you were about to move on to our extended public comment, so if you, if you'd like to raise, speak, please raise your hand now. Director Saidi, do you want to make a motion?
I would like to move the recommendation.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Director Vassadab. Ms. Chares?
Student Director Miller?
Yes.
Director Vassadab?
Yes.
Director Babbitt?
Yes.
And Director Saidi?
Yes.
Vice President Brown? I think it was a yes and President.
I'm going to be coy, Vice President Brown. Yes.
I'm sorry, I said yes. I didn't unmute myself.
Yes. All right, congratulations. Thank you, Executive Director Kalis, and for all your work as well, Director Saidi. It's a great step forward. All right. I, I see, this is the time, your last chance to raise your hand, if you'd like to give extended public comment. Okay, we have time for two minutes each. There's, there's four people. Paz Melendez Canales, Lindsay Nofelt, Mr. Tablum, and Ms. Phillips. I think that's Ms. Phillips. So we will start with Paz Melendez Canales. Ms. Melendez Canales is returning for command performance.
Hi again. I wanted to finish my comments, actually.
Okay, welcome back.
My name is Paz Melendez Canales, and I wanted to continue my comments regarding the Office of Family Engagement and Equity and District-wide Support for Latinx Families. At a time when the Latinx community has been disproportionately impacted by COVID-19, we would like to see more district-wide support for the Office of Family Engagement and Equity and on issues such as vaccination education, student testing, education, housing insecurity, food insecurity, et cetera. We would also like to advocate for more support from the OFI Office for all Latinx families, district-wide, and to, and for OFI to start working more closely in partnership with Latinos Unidos at Berkeley to address our community's unique needs during the pandemic. We also have concerns that OFI has not celebrated district-wide such challenges in the Lord's Word, the commemorative period celebrations in BUSD for two years now. It would be great, for example, to have a district-wide Latino Heritage Celebration evening, like the ones we used to have at Ciudad Mendiz in the past, which built community and increased engagement. EL reclassification is another issue. In 2019, it seems that hardly any students were reclassified and reclassified. And in 2020, only two schools, Ciudad Mendiz and BAM, are reclassifying more than twice the number of students than the rest of the elementarys, middle schools, and high school. We need to know what these schools, what these two schools are doing and that the others are not, and how it can be replicated. In terms of communication, we need a dedicated Spanish bilingual person to deal with the communication needs and outreach in the Latino community, such as publicity for district-wide town halls and meetings, presentations, events, and even enrollment deadlines, for example. TWI, reaching to the Latino community, translation and recording of phone blasts, accurately surveying the community when their input is needed, and utilizing alternative forms of communication, such as Facebook remind texts, et cetera. Finally, in order to help close the achievement gap, we need more culturally affirming programs for our students, such as Punt de Raza and Graduation Latino Heritage Month, et cetera. Thank you.
You're muted. You are President.
I'm muted, sorry. Ms. Chares didn't need me, really. Ms. Nofelt, you're next.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I'd like to start out my comment at the end of the evening to appreciate our teachers during this week. It is amazing the work that they've done this year and every year. And the people on the ground are the people who really make a huge difference day in and day out. And so I'd like to just publicly put my heart out to the teachers who do such great work every day. I have a nitpicky thing about how we continually conflate LCFF supplemental funds in this district across our presentations. And I've spoken before about the alphabet soup. I really appreciate the hard work that everybody's doing to clarify acronyms when they're used with such ease across the board. I've noticed a big change. But one thing that we do here is, in a lot of presentations and a lot of slide decks, we talk about the LCFF supplemental funds as LCAP funds. It's not true. It's confusing. And it, I, I believe that it harms the work that the PAC does, the Parent Advisory Committee does, in how we need to broaden the lens and let them talk about the entire budget. So it's super nitpicky, but I believe it's, it's important also. And then I'd just like to close out by appreciating the focus lens that we take on looking at the curriculum changes and adjustments and measurements that we do to our curriculum in general ed and special ed tier two. in general ed and special ed tier two and tier three interventions. I know that everybody's tired. And I appreciate looking at curriculum and not blaming kids, especially in math and literacy. So thank you so much.
Thanks so much, Ms. Nofelt, Mr. Tablem, and then we'll finish with Paula. Thank you so much. Mr. Tablem and then Ms. Phillips.
Yeah, hi, good evening or good night. I'm looking at the one slide Superintendent Stevens presented stating again that BUSD will return to a full in-person program in the fall. I I I'm sorry, and I was not at the beginning of this meeting and I really didn't hear also Mr. Myers' comments in this meeting. So I'm wondering if there's any piece of information that you can give us Superintendent Stevens or is it an alter to actually how to say, support that one slide statement that none of the board raised any question about went on. That's that's, I believe, sort of the you know, the elephant in the room. Because you've run the clock on this year, it's May fifth. The year is going to be over officially in less than a month. But what about next year? According to the schedule, you'll be in recess during through July. First board meeting is for August eighteen after the summer, which is a couple of days after the beginning of the year. So what are we to expect this summer? Again, to some late emails and of early in August updating last moment about development and negotiations with the labor partners. Is there any piece of information that you can share with us to support that one slide statement? Because what used to be kind of a little bit confusing and concerning in the past, your statement about discussions with the labor partners, now the silence about it is even more disturbing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tablem. I do encourage you to go back and listen to Matt Myers' comments from tonight. I think address your comments. Next, we have Paula Phillips. I I keep assuming it's Paula Phillips, let's see if it really is. Paula?
You're. Okay. Okay.
Oh, there you are.
Okay. And there's, oh, okay, I'm clearly having, there we are.
There you are.
Here I am, okay, it's late. Thank you. I just wanted to speak on Bajay leaving. Bajay, when I heard you were leaving, I was both incredibly happy for you and sad at the same time. Happy because you're starting a new chapter in your life and sad because you're one of the best leaders I've ever worked for in my time here at BUSD. And maybe, just maybe, it had a lot to do with the fact that I'm wasn't the president of the BCC. Many of you can testify to that. When you were hired in two thousand nineteen, it was to fill the role of the Associate Superintendent. And even though you held that title, you were much more than that. And much more because you were without a team. You were the Executive Director of Special Ed, the Executive Director of the K eight Schools, the Director of Programs and Special Projects, along with several other key positions in the district. And the Brea Department was, no one was there either. And so some might wonder how you did it. But for those of us who were there to turn the lights off with you at nighttime, we know that it was because of your determination and your drive. You realized early on that in order to succeed in your new position, that you needed to build a team. And so you set out to build a team and thank God that you did. Because what, ten months into your new role, the pandemic hit. And so it required the district to turn on a dime to deliver services to children in a way that no one has ever done before. And so I say all this because as part of your team, being on your team, I appreciate so much the encouragement that you've given me over the short span of time that I've worked with you. And it's because of your encouragement and your belief in me that I assume this new role as the Classified Professional Development Director, I mean, not director, yeah, coordinator. So I just want to leave you and say that Friedrich Nietzsche said, that which doesn't kill us makes us strong. Well, we didn't kill you. So we must have made you stronger. Stronger to take on the new challenges of your new role and anything that life has before you. So with that, I'm going to miss you. I consider you a colleague and a friend. We've shared some pretty wild stories in the evening. And I I I, all I can say is I'm going to miss you a lot. Thank you for everything that you've done.
Wow. Ms. Phillips, thank you so much. Bajay, if I don't know if you want to send us home with any, you don't have to. Okay. Paula, thank you for being here, that was really nice. It's it's that was such a great way to close this meeting, to close Bajay's last meeting. It it's really means a lot to all of us that you that you came out, you know, at the end of the meeting, really thank you. It's great to see you.
I guess it was meant for me to miss putting my hand up at the at the at the beginning.
It was fate, it was fate, you you're welcome to come back at ten fifty-nine at any meeting you'd like. We'll reserve a spot for you.
Thank you. Thank you, that was so.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, thank you all, take care, we're adjourned.